Good afternoon. Welcome to the study session, Newport Beach City Council for October 22nd. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Current business. Do we have to clarify any items on the consent calendar? Any questions? Mr. Avery? Mr. Duffield? Mr. Muldoon? Ms. Brenner? Mr. Hurdman?
No.
Mayor Potem?
Yes. Item number five. I'd ask Mr. Webb just to briefly explain. So item number five is the one dealing with the 16th Street water pump station on the designs. One of the questions I'd asked was about cost. And so I figured it'd be better to just do a clarification on the explanation of cost before, instead of pulling it. So if you wouldn't mind just explaining, Mr. Webb, the $300,000, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Potem. This item has to do with rather complex designs. So what the Mayor Potem pointed out is it's probably higher than your normal engineering fees that you're used to. But keep in mind that what we're doing here is we're working on our pump station. We're going to be basically adding a backup generator that is not there now. So we have electrical switching, natural gas, diesel pads to do design. It's also in an area we're going to require retaining walls and various items. Just the switching alone is rather complex electronic engineering. To that, we're going to be changing out three of the pumps, on the five pumps that are there, and then the motors on those pumps. And then the other thing we're going to be changing is another complex instrument. It's the starting gear for those pumps. Right now, two of them are variable speed, three of them are set speed. And those set speed ones are from 1997, I believe. They're almost 20 years old. And they control how the pump starts and stops. They're tied into our utility SCADA system, which is our control system. So it's all custom designed that fits into that. In addition to that, we're going to be doing some pipe work on how to get the water out of the reservoir, reduce the friction matter, and increase the efficiencies of the pumps. So there's a lot of little pieces that take a lot of design effort, and thus the cost is bigger compared to say we're just putting a pipeline in down three miles of road. It's very repetitious and it's a lot less expense. But this has a lot of little details into it, and that's why you see the cost is higher tonight.
And then the only other question I had, we didn't list the costs associated with the others, but they were, I guess, generally question, the general question is where were they in line with one another?
Generally, we saw that each proposal had all their basic hours they're going to do on the project, and the hours among the various consultants were roughly the same. We have their billing rates, and we check those against industry standards. They all were basically in alignment on that. We did talk to our preferred contractor tonight, or designer, I'm sorry, DUDAC, and we actually did some modifications and had them lower it, to lower some of their hours, a little negotiation, and make sure they're all in alignment there. But that was looked at.
Okay. That's it on the consent items. All right. Study session item number two, we have a special event. Proclamation commemorating probably one of the most significant business enterprises in the city of Newport Beach is Balboa Island Ferry 100th anniversary. So I'd like to ask the Beek family, if you'd all like to come stand up here, please, as we proclaim your honor. And I will read the proclamation. And then after, ask you family members, any or all of you, if you wanted to make a few comments, and then we'll go for a picture-taking session. Whereas, the Balboa Island Ferry in Newport Beach has been operated by the Beek family for 100 years. And in 1919, Joseph Allen Beek obtained the right to provide ferry service from Balboa Island to the Balboa Peninsula and charged five cents per person. And the Balboa Island Ferry is the oldest operating business in Newport Beach. And in 1950, Joseph Allen Beek built three wooden boats for the ferry service, the Admiral, the Commodore, and the Captain. All three boats are still running today and have transported over 2 million people and cars. Now therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby congratulate Balboa Island Ferry on its 100th year anniversary. And thank you. So, please, please speak. We'd love to hear from you. We are so honored to honor you. And this is just a momentous occasion, an historic occasion. So please, you have the microphone.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is a great honor to the family. I'd just like to introduce the Beek family members that are here. Of course, I'm the exalted president of the Balboa Island Ferry Company. My brother Allen is a board member and vice president. And my sister-in-law Linda is a board member and the secretary. And also present, my daughter Cynthia, my son David. So that's all the family members that we could muster. There are lots more Beeks in the area, but they couldn't all be here.
Did anyone else want to speak, or make any comments?
I'm going to repeat what my father said one time when the franchise was renewed. When J.C. Collins, who subdivided Balboa Island, went bankrupt, he ceased to run a ferry service, and the people who came on the big red cars couldn't get to their homes. They besieged the city council to issue a franchise and get some ferry service going. One taker said he could start next month. Next taker said he could start next week. So Dad said he'd start tomorrow. He got the franchise.
Smart businessman.
If we were the Von Trop family, we could sing you a song right now. But I would just like to thank the city council and the city. It is a great honor, and thanks for recognizing an accomplishment that my grandfather did over 100 years ago. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other ones?
I'd like to thank you too, and I wish my husband Barton was here. He would really enjoy this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, why don't you join me at the flag? Oh, excuse me. I'm moving too fast here. We have people who want to speak, of course. Mr. Muldoon?
If I had a dollar for every time someone took the ferry, I'd be a Beek. This, obviously, you're a very important family to the city of Newport Beach. Obviously, its members or family also have served our country with distinction. And it is a big honor to have this operation in the city. It adds to the unique character that you can't experience in other communities. And all of you are actively involved. Some of you less than others, nice to meet you. Not always on the same side of the aisle as well, so it makes a very interesting story. But it's great to see you up here in Seymour and all the Beeks. Thanks for everything you do for our community.
Mr. Avery?
Well, now that there's this collection of Beeks here, I have a question. I remember a story about how you could ride the ferry halfway across for a nickel, and you could jump off and swim the rest of the way. Is there any truth to that? Is that just?
Absolutely, Brad. You're welcome to do that anytime you want.
Thank you, Seymour. Hey, nickel, that's pretty good. Summer.
I pay the nickel.
Mr. Duffield?
So my question is, how many ferries are there in, still service in California? Like, one or two? Do you know?
I can't help you there, but there are lots of them in San Francisco, great big ones charging around San Francisco.
Oh, they don't count. No, no. We need ones like yours. So you're...
I don't think there are very many like ours.
No, you're down to like none.
There are a few up in the Delta that are about our size, but they don't do near as much business as we do.
Yeah, yeah. So it is a dying industry, something probably youngsters shouldn't want to get into. But we talked years, for years, about making them electric. So I just want to make my pitch that someday, somehow, some way, darn it, they should be electric. Thank you. And thank you for all the great back and forths.
Literally. Well, and I will just say too, as I said a moment ago, what an honor it is to be mayor and to congratulate this amazing family that has held it all together for our city and for your own family business all these years. You know, you say a dying industry. Other than building a bridge or a tunnel, I don't know the form of transportation. I mean, it still works, the concept of transportation is still the best mode of transportation compared to what it was 100 years ago. I don't think this community would support a tunnel or a bridge. And so I think your future looks bright as far as business prospects. Mr. Hurdman, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just want to echo the thanks and the recognition that you so well deserve. And Seymour, I want to thank you too for supporting the Balboa Island Museum and Historical Society with all that you have done for that organization. And Dave, for the Commodores and the Chamber of Commerce. Allen, for SPON. You not only provide a ferry service, but you all provide meaningful services beyond that to the city, and it's very much appreciated.
Why don't you join me now?
I'm sure you'll be around for another 100 years too, that ferry.
I'd like to add something, Diane, while you're doing that. No, that's okay. I just wanted to add that when I used to drop my daughter off at the Balboa Island side of the ferry for her to go to junior guards over on the other side, I would take pictures of these kids, and there's little uniforms. And I, I used to think, this is America. This is what every child in America should have the opportunity to do. And I just think that the ferry is such a part of our history. We really are grateful to you.
All right, now the picture-taking. Mr. Hurdman?
Our rivalry game always hit her. Yeah, everybody hurt.
Two, three.
Sorry, I had those made.
Oh, did you?
So I'm going to toss the coin on Friday.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. So that's a copy, that's a copy of what I'm tossing on Friday.
Oh, oh, sure. Everybody. Jeff, oh, come on.
Come on, Jeff.
Oh, that's much better. I'll just sit there. Heather. Get a little closer there. Oh, there, a little squish, back up a little bit. Brad, there we go. Okay, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
That's one of the best proclamations I think I've read. That's fantastic. All right, now to serious matters. We have a presentation by the Orange County Registrar of Voters, Mr. Neil Kelly, who will be joining us with his box, voting box, and will tell us about the new vote center model for elections in Orange County. Welcome, Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's an honor to be here tonight and have a discussion with you about how voting's really going to change in the county in 2020. I did give to the city clerks some brochures to just kind of give you a highlight of those changes, and it's actually very helpful, I think, for your constituents, and we can provide those to you in large quantities. So I wanted to just talk briefly about the legislation that allowed this change to take place, and that's SB 450. It was passed in 2016. And that bill essentially said that you could, as a county, opt in to a different method of voting for voters. And some of the reasons that we looked at this pretty closely was because of the changing trends here in the county. Your city is no stranger to this, the rise in vote by mail has been exponential over the last several years. In fact, since 1996, we've had about a 6,000% growth in vote by mail. And that's been organic. That's the voters choosing that method of voting as opposed to us doing that. If the trend lines were to continue, about nine out of every 10 voters would be voting by mail or receiving their ballot through the mail in the next couple of years. And that trend line just continues to grow even if we weren't doing this process. Dropping off of ballots has also grown tremendously. So if you go back about 10 years, the numbers were very low. In fact, there were about 40,000 roughly ballots that were dropped off at a polling place on Election Day. We received over 180,000 in November of 18 that were dropped off at a polling place on Election Day. Voters are changing their habits and holding on to that ballot longer as opposed to returning it fairly quickly. If you go back a couple of primary elections, there were several candidates that dropped out of the primary. Of course, California was late in the primary game, and there were a lot of voters that wanted to pull their ballot back and to revote. And of course, you can't do that in California. So now they hang on to them, and that's changed. And then finally, provisional ballots. Provisional ballots have grown, I like to call it an epidemic because it really has become an epidemic. If you look in 2004, and first of all, for the public and for members of the council, the provisional ballot is essentially, we can't determine the eligibility of the voter when they cast their ballot. So it's held in the holding pattern until after Election Day. And then we go in and we review that ballot, we review the materials, and determine whether they were an eligible voter or not. One in 10 voters cast provisional ballot in 2004. So fast forward to 2018, we had one in, excuse me, one in 100 in 2004, one in 10 in 2018. It really changed and grew dramatically. Two reasons for that. One is DMV. There were some issues with DMV and changing the way that voters were, their records were to reflect that they wanted a vote by mail ballot when they didn't really want a vote by mail ballot. That was a DMV issue. So voters received the ballot in the mail, but they still wanted to vote in person. And when they showed up in person, that forced them into that provisional status. The other is showing up to the wrong polling place, and that has grown tremendously as well. Campaigns have been doing, I think, a really good job of saying, just look for a vote sign and stop anywhere you'd like to. But when you do that, you're out of your home precinct, and that forces you into provisional ballot as well. So the bottom line with provisionals, especially for those of you that are campaigning or are going to be on the ballot, that extends that counting time for weeks after Election Day. It also adds about 100 people to the process, and it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to process those. So SB 450 allows us to change this method of voting to vote centers. And vote centers does essentially three things. The first is every ballot, every voter will receive a ballot in the mail 29 days before Election Day. So that's the first thing that will occur. After that, there will be 11 days of in-person voting, 10 days plus what we think of traditionally as Election Day. And that will happen about the middle of the month. And then that in-person component will allow a voter to vote anywhere in the county. No longer are they tied to a home precinct. If you live in Newport Beach and you work in Anaheim, you could vote at a vote center in Anaheim, and we'll print out your Newport Beach ballot for you in Anaheim. So really big changes, fundamental changes in the experience for voters. That, just that experience of being able to print a ballot for anybody at any location eliminates all of those provisional ballots that I was just describing. The other is, because we will be checking them electronically when they show up, we can see if they've cast a ballot already. That eliminates the need to bring in your ballot with you. Because as soon as you cast an in-person ballot, your vote by mail ballot is voided immediately. And none of that occurs currently in a regular polling place. These ballot drop boxes, I brought a small version for you to show you here, will be located throughout the county. There will be 110 of these throughout the county. And we know from data from voters, and especially what I was just describing to you in terms of the numbers of people that are dropping them off, they feel much more comfortable dropping them off to the election official or turning them over to the election official as opposed to giving them to the post office. Those numbers are growing substantially as well. And so these ballot drop boxes mirror what you see in Washington State, what you see in Oregon, you're seeing them now in Colorado. So it's the same sort of method of delivering it directly to the election official. These will be located, there's a requirement for each city, depending on the number of registered voters, to have a certain number of drop boxes in the city. For Newport Beach, it's four. And so what we would be doing, we're continuing to work on those locations right now to be able to install these. But they would open 29 days before Election Day, and they would close precisely at 8:00 on Election Night. So if a voter was in line or a car was there waiting, as long as they were there before 8:00, they would be able to deposit their ballot. The collection will also be taking place daily. So ballots will not be sitting in these drop boxes, it'll just be like a mail pickup. It'll be occurring daily. We're exploring several options in terms of the security features. For instance, fire suppression devices inside of the boxes, devices inside that keep the container of ballots away from the edges. So if somebody were to pour some sort of liquid in there, it won't go directly into that container device. And it's also elevated off of the bottom. So if something did get in there, it would go to the bottom and drain out. So a number of features, it's, for instance, Washington State is using, and we're exploring those as well. Just briefly, I wanted to talk about the hours. So for the first seven days?
Excuse me, sir. There may be a couple of questions. Mr. Hurdman, did you want?
Not a question, just an observation. So the box is unsupervised?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, sir. And actually, good point, sir, because the majority of these boxes will be under security cameras. So we are locating them where we could obtain footage if we needed to, if there was an issue.
What are some examples of where they'll be located?
So we've already started installing some around the county. For instance, at the new county center downtown in Santa Ana. We've installed them at several libraries. We just recently installed one at the Laguna Beach Library. So lots of locations, government facilities, but also retail locations where people, our foot traffic, are located.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. For the hours of vote centers, the first seven days, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m., so there'll be two sections of Saturday and Sundays included in that 11 days. The last three days, which would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or excuse me, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, they'll be operating from 8:00 to 8:00. And then on Election Day, traditionally, it's 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. So lots of options for voters.
So you, a person could not deposit their ballot after 8:00 p.m.? Is that what you just said?
Correct.
I see. It just closes up, or there's some mechanism that it?
I wish that were the case. We did explore some options in that regard, but we'll have teams of two individuals at every box.
And they pick them up and take them?
Yes, ma'am.
I see.
That's correct. And lock them down. We'll put a large clock right on top of the box to show the voters what time it is on our clock. A lot of services in the vote centers that you can't get in a traditional polling place, the ballot on demand option is one of the things that I just talked to you about. That electronic check-in piece is really important for a number of reasons. One is it's connected to our database, which is connected to the statewide database. So we'll be able to see information on voters in real time. What's the status of their records? What's the status of their registration? If there's an address change, we can make that on the fly, right with them in the vote center. None of that could be done in a polling place in a garage, for instance. Those services would not exist. Provisional ballots, I've already talked to you about, trained employees. These will not be volunteers. We love our volunteers, but that program is now gone. And these will all be trained county employees, not full-time. They'll be seasonal combined with our full-time staff. And so the value of that is much more control than we have over volunteers, as you can imagine, and also the training aspect. We'll be training these employees for a week as opposed to a three-hour training program for our poll workers. So quite a bit more education and engagement with those employees prior to Election Day. You can vote at any location, which I talked to you about, and you'll have those multiple days. One of my favorite parts of this is the reduced cost. So the capital feature in terms of investing in new voting technology, we are investing about $15 million in our new system. We would have invested almost $40 million had we gone to a polling place model under new equipment. So much reduced capital cost, reduced operating cost over time, which will benefit the city. I have a conference call with the city clerks tomorrow to discuss the election costs, and one of the things I'm going to talk about is that we will be recouping the capital cost of this, but we've received 75% in state and federal grants to help pay and offset those costs. So that'll benefit the city as well in those long-term costs. Much more secure. I've talked to you about that real-time update and those electronic check-in devices, but also the chain of custody. And this is really important. All of that equipment and all of that, the ballots on each night will be secured and transported back to our facility in Santa Ana, and will open again the next day and do it all over again. So in a polling place environment, poll workers would put the materials in the trunk of their car and drive them to a collection center. I can't tell you how many times on Election Night at 3:00 in the morning I was trying to get into a garage because there were ballots in the trunk that somebody forgot. So those things go away as well under this model. This might resonate with many of you, and that is data exchange for campaigns. So now, if you remember, under polling places, you would go up and look at that street index, and you would see who's voted, and that information is crossed off by the poll workers. We're now moving to an electronic data exchange. So that information will be sent to campaigns in real time and individuals who are running, so they would see who's voted, who hasn't, how they voted, et cetera. I get a lot of questions from the public saying, you know, why am I getting phone calls? And why am I getting mail? Well, state law allows campaigns to use that information to be able to reach out to voters. And now it'll be electronic in real time.
May I ask a question? Are you saying during that period when voting is going on, there'll be a release of voting results?
Not results, Mayor. What it'll be is the record information on the voter. For instance, have they cast a ballot already? How did they cast the ballot? But not the results. That'll still wait till Election Night.
Yeah, who they...
So the confusion is your comment about how they voted, it's not who they voted for, it's the procedure, like mail-in or drop it off at...
Yes, sir, the methodology, correct. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. And the information that's contained in that electronic data exchange is the same information you would obtain as a campaign, for instance, name, address, et cetera. There's nothing personal that you would receive on a voter, their driver's license, their social security number, that's all protected.
But then, for example, would it have party affiliation identified?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, that's included in the data. One of the things that we will be doing, and I know this will be important for your residents as well as across the county, is communicating these changes to voters because this is a huge shift in how we're going to be voting coming up in 2020. And voters that have been voting for decades, another way, it's going to take a few cycles, I think, to get people engaged in this and to be able to really, to make them aware. This has happened in Colorado. They shifted to vote centers in 2014, and it took them a cycle or two for the voters to adapt. And now the voters love it, if you look at the data from Colorado. But I know I'm going to get a phone call on Election Night that says, you know, I'm at a garage, and why is my polling place not open? That's going to come to me, I know. So what we're doing is we're sending out multiple mailers to voters. Starting in January, we are launching a very robust marketing campaign, which we will be saturating the county with information on this, including social media, print, broadcast, outdoor, you name it, and including three mailings to every single voter in the county. And then finally, on, when you get your voter guide in the mail, there'll be a two-page spread that will provide information on the vote centers, where they're located, where your ballot box is located, and then dynamic data on the back of the voter guide that will inform the voter where their closest drop box is and where their closest vote center is. That'll also all be online electronically. And one last bit of information on the boxes themselves, they're all numbered, and so when the voter deposits their ballot in the drop box, we will be sorting down in an automated fashion to that level, to the box. So a voter could go online and say, I dropped my ballot in box 172, and it'll show up on your voter record in ballot box 172. That provides confidence to the voters. We know the voters are looking for that information to be able to track their ballot through the entire chain of custody. Just real quickly on the vote centers themselves, how are we selecting the vote centers? There's a formula in the law that requires one vote center for every 10,000 voters for the last four days, and one vote center for every 50,000 voters for the first seven days. So that's the formula based on each city around the county. So we'll have 188 total throughout the county, and we'll have 110 ballot drop boxes throughout the county that will be operating. And the way that we select that, there's a criteria in the law, there's 11 points of data that we have to look at. I won't go through all of them with you, but it includes vehicle ownership, voter density, how voters are voting in terms of methodology, vote by mail, et cetera. And all of that's put into a software program that we use to grade an address, to tell us if it's a good location for a vote center. And I would invite the public, you can go on our website at ocvote.gov. And I would invite the public, you can go on our website at ocvote.com, and type in an address, and it'll grade that for you, and tell you if it would be a good location, if you have an idea or thought about a vote center. We do have to lock them by December the 6th, so that's the date that I'm really pushing out there for the public. Finally, we have buy-in across the community in terms of organizations that will be getting behind this, including the League of Women Voters, both major parties, lots of organizations throughout the county that will be helping to educate voters, and get the word out there about what we're doing, and information. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Well, and before someone indicates, so clarify for me, please, that vote by mail, will people still be voting by mail, or they're just dropping off?
Yes, ma'am, so they would still be able to vote by mail, under state law, postage is now included, so they could drop that into any mailbox, or they could drop it into one of these boxes as well.
And, maybe you said this, but maybe I didn't hear it, if voting closes at 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, how soon thereafter will results be released, tabulated?
That's a great question, and one of the things that I am happy about when it comes to vote centers, because we will be processing ballots throughout that 11-day period, as those ballots are coming in. We start processing vote by mail ballots 10 days out from Election Day, which I think most of the public doesn't know. So, once we get to Election Day, we're really down to what's dropped off on that day, and what's dropped off that night. Because provisional ballots are being eliminated, for the most part, we can cut that time down by weeks, and so I would anticipate that we'll be able to cut that time in half. Can't promise it, but California gives us a 30-day window to certify that election. My hope is, is we'll be able to start doing that in 14 to 16 days, on average, for a countywide.
So that's for all the ballots, whereas before, the in-person voting, we, obviously, was not final vote, but we saw, as it's being tabulated, so are you suggesting that we won't know final results on Election Day?
Well, I think in California, it's fair to say that we have a 60-day voting period, as opposed to a single day, and that's a good point. And so, yes, that's what I'm saying, I think in close races, you're going to see that continue, because voters' behavior have changed so much, that they're waiting till that last minute to drop off, and then you start that cycle of counting all over again, on Election Night. So that's when you're going to see, three, four, five days out, that those numbers will continue to change.
And then I just have one final question, on SBE 450, I think that was the name of the bill, was this concept, legislative concept, created by the Association of Registered Voters, or was it conceived a different way?
So it was conceived through the legislature, but the association did get behind the bill in question, and I think the reason really for that, was the experience for voters was becoming much more difficult, as it was becoming more difficult to recruit volunteers, as more and more voters were using vote by mail, it just wasn't the same experience as it has been the last 30 or 40 years. And so, and the volume was another issue, and provisional ballots were another issue, so the association did get behind it.
Oh, and you were supportive of the legislation?
Yes, ma'am. There's been a number of reforms come down from Sacramento when it comes to voting, and I have not been in favor of all these reforms, and I have to be careful on my opinions, but I will tell you that this really changes the experience for the voter, and I think that's important.
We have some questions here, Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor, so, I think I'd have to leave the building if I didn't ask this question, and I'm totally sorry to ask it, and I don't mean anything against you at all.
That's okay.
Truly. I have to do this, can you still have a recount?
That's a good question.
That's okay, that's a great question, yes, sir, you can.
Not a great question.
You absolutely can, and any candidate can request that after I've certified the election.
Well, I was hoping you couldn't, but okay.
Yeah, that law still exists.
Mr. Muldoon.
Hey, Neil, I was wondering, off the top of your head in recent memory, what are the three closest races in Orange County history?
Hmm, well.
Trung Wuen, right?
Trung Wuen was definitely a close race, seven votes, that separated those, went down to four after a court challenge.
Yeah.
The Yorba Linda City Council race in 2008 was one vote between the candidates. Those two are the closest in recent memory, there were a few that were 100 votes apart, but those were the closest.
Our colleague here.
That's right, yes, I forgot about that one, how could I forget about that one?
You do a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Avery.
I just want to say congratulations, and being involved with a rare bipartisan effort.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Brenner.
I had never worked at a polling place in my life until the primary two years ago, and I have to say, thank you, that was one of the worst days of my life. It was so much work, I could not believe how hard it was, how hard those people worked, and the length of the day, it was just extraordinarily difficult, so, especially with the aging population, certainly in Newport Beach, but I'm really excited about these changes that you're making.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, and thank you for your service, I appreciate that, all for about $1.15 an hour, by the way.
Any other questions, so we'll turn it over to the public, so thank you, Mr. Kelly, for now, in case we have any other questions, thank you. So you're going around to all the cities?
I, I'm not doing that, but at any request, I am.
Well, thank you.
For sure, yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, I should ask our city clerk, did you have any questions?
No, I'll just wait until our teleconference tomorrow.
Well, she keeps us in order here, so. Any questions, comments from the public, would you like to come up on this?
Good afternoon, my name is Laura Curran in Corona del Mar, so I did work the last election, we only got to work till 10:00, Joy, but I had Evelyn Hart in my line, so if any of you have seen Evelyn, I'm going to miss that, Evelyn Hart is a denizen of Newport, who comes in full patriotic regalia, so, she'll, she drops with the ballot. What I did want to say is, a lot of people had comments about the provisional ballots, how do you know they're real voters? And I think what we talked to them about was, our goal here is to give everyone an opportunity to participate in democracy, we're giving them an opportunity to vote, and there will be verification of their address, we will know, through that 10-day process, that folks are truly qualified to vote, but I think when we said to folks, we're all here to participate in the democracy at the local level, the state level, the federal level, and you're part of that, it was amazing how their demeanor changed, and they really kind of said, yeah, exactly, that's why we're here. So that process is such an important process, and I'm sure as you're going out to talk to the public, that's an important part of that message, that we're here to vote, and your vote, your vote matters, so I just wanted to share that, thank you.
Thank you, any other public comments? I'll bring it back, I have one more question, Mr. Kelly. Last election, there was a development, which was called ballot harvesting, is that, how is that affected by this new process?
Ballot harvesting will continue, AB 1461 was the vehicle for that. Just very quickly, for members of the public, that allows anybody to come up to your door, your residents, knock on your door, and ask if you would like to turn over your ballot to them, to collect and return to my office. That process used to be only allowed for relatives of the individual, a roommate, somebody that had some sort of connection to that household, so it's now wide open for campaigns or others to do that. Colorado has the same law under vote centers, but they only allow 10 ballots to be collected, in California, it's unlimited, you can collect as many ballots as you would like. So that process will continue, that's one of those reforms that is a part of the sweeping number of reforms that have come down.
Is that a reform?
Well, yeah, good point. I will say this, you know, I think that there were far fewer ballots that were collected under that method than people think, because I've heard from across the spectrum, every individual party, saying, I'm not trusting somebody that's knocking on my door, I'm going to turn over my ballot to them. And we received thousands of phone calls from people asking if it was even legal to be allowed to do. So, yes, it's going to continue, there's nothing really I can do about that, but we'll continue to monitor it very closely.
All right, thank you, and thank you very much for coming, I appreciate your communications, marketing plan that you'll be launching the first of the year, but of course, we have a primary in March, will be effective in the primary as well?
Yeah, March 3rd.
You're a busy guy, all right, thank you so much, I appreciate that. All right, next item, we have Wildland Fire Mitigation Plan Update, we have our fire chief and our fire marshal, Mr. Kevin Bass, will discuss wildland fuel fire reduction and hazard mitigation efforts in Newport Coast, Buck Gully, and Corona del Mar.
All right, and due to real property interest, I'm going to recuse from this.
All right.
Good evening.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, my name's Jeff Boils, I'm the fire chief, and I brought with me our fire marshal, Kevin Bass, who will be going through most of tonight's presentation, but I'm going to go ahead and introduce him as our resident expert with fuel modification and hazard mitigation, which is a timely topic on the cusp of a red flag event, with the temperatures rising and the humidity lowering, and winds picking up right now. Kevin will go through a little bit of the difference of the terms, we speak in our everyday life, but hopefully Kevin will encapsulate what exactly they mean and answer some of your questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Newport Beach Fire has a wildland management program, and with this management program, we essentially have, right now, an operating component of vegetation management. The vegetation management is in three components, one is city-managed properties, the other is fuel modification landscape areas, and the last is what we call the Hazard Reduction or Defensible Space Landscape Areas. The other component that I'd like to initiate, and this will be in the future, is the Ready Secule Program, which is a CalFire or state program, which will be a public education program for our homeowners and our business owners, for improving their homes, preparing for evacuation, and then knowing when to leave in the event of an evacuation order. So our current status is, is that the city-managed properties, our landscape maintenance with our contractors through Public Works, is on track with improving public properties. That includes properties along the north edge of Buck Gully, down in the stream bed of Middle Buck Gully, areas along Big Canyon Park. We also have fuel modification, primarily the fuel modification are formal landscape plans that were submitted by the developers and maintained by the homeowners association. Those areas are maintained, and we do inspect them on an annual basis, and as of right now, they're all in good standing. Primarily, you'll see most of these fuel modification areas in the Newport Coast area. The Hazard Reduction Zones are the areas where we don't have a formal plan, so property owners are responsible for maintaining their individual properties, to what is under the government code or the public resource code. And the city has adopted its own hazard reduc-, hazard, sorry, Hazard Reduction Zone methodology, where currently, we ask the property owners to maintain a green program, where the dead and the dining, dead and dying vegetation are removed, and the invasive, where we can persuade them to remove it, is removed. While the properties are in conformance, we've noticed, or at least I've noticed, that the fuel load has increased in several areas, Buck Gully, Middle, Lower Buck Gully, and the Morning Canyon areas in particular. So this is a map, just showing some of the areas where we have pictures, as you can see, we focus in Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, and in the, what I call the Upper Buck Gully area, as well as the area up north by the San Joaquin Reservoir. So, Vegemite, this is an example of city properties that are maintained, so Sandcastle, which is on the northeast, sorry, northwest portion of Upper Buck Gully, is maintained by the city, and as you can see on picture number one, the city crews do a good job. Middle Buck Gully, this is in the stream bed area, this is below Poppy, you can see in the city area that they have tackled quite a bit of the vegetation. You don't really see it very well from satellite images, because you still have a canopy effect, but if you go and walk down in that area, you'll find that they've cut quite a bit out. There's more work to be done, but a lot of work has been done this past, this past year. In regards to the fuel modification landscaping, I took a representative picture of what we see in the Pelican Heights area, which is at the northeast end of Upper Buck Gully. As you can see, this is an example of how they use spacing between bushes, shrubs, and trees, with ground cover on the slope itself, and you'll see the spacing, which is what we like to see in terms of breaking up the fuel beds, so that you don't have one large mass of fuel available for an incoming fire. The intent of fuel modification is to have the fire run up, and then lay down in this area, so that the firefighters who are at the top of slope have the ability to basically spread their resources out and maintain integrity to the neighborhoods. The Hazard Reduction Zone or Defensible Space is where the homeowners are responsible for maintaining, and as you can see from these two pictures, are representative of what we see in the area, where we have some good examples, and maybe not some great examples. What we're looking for is more on what you see for 307 Milford, where you have spacing, less undergrowth, less laddering of fuels from the ground up to the crown of the trees, whereas in the 627 Rockford slope, which has been found in conformance, because it's green, and it's live, and the dead material has been removed, we just had a lot of rain, and things grow, and even though they're green, they start to fill in. So these are the types of areas that we want to target.
When you say target, to thin out, to, but if it's in conformance, should we be looking at our codes, I mean, should we tighten that up a little bit?
And that's, it'll be just in a section in the, in the program.
All right, okay.
So here's some areas that are not in our inspection program, I target this area because I was working with some complaints on where the city of Irvine actually owns some property, between the reservoir and Benita Canyon Drive. So we have Hilltop Drive, which is a condominium community that's fairly close to Benita Drive, they've actually done quite a bit of work here, this is the Irvine, City of Irvine, and the OCFA Hang Crew, doing a lot of work, this is the kind of stuff we want to see. But we haven't had the work done over, near the actual reservoir itself, so you can see some homes peeking through the tree, tree line on Sherberg and Saint-Tropez. This is the next target area of why we want to change our codes, because these aren't even in our inspection program. So this is the plan of action for fire prevention, we want to adopt amendments for Chapter 49, the Wildland Provisions of the Fire Code, which you'll see at the next council meeting. This will include additional authority for the fire chief and the fire marshal to identify wildland urban interface properties that should be inspected, and should be part of any vegetation management program. Great example was the last two pictures that I showed, they are not part of any designated area, but they are truly an interface area, and the authority is given to us via the Public Resource Code and the Government Code, so we're not doing anything that's outside, but this formalizes the program for the city. The next thing we want to do is update the city guidelines, our city guidelines, particularly for the hazardous reduction zone, is, for lack of a better phrase, generous for the homeowners. And what we want to do is, we want to create the guidelines that replicate the fuel modification in terms of breaking up and spreading out the large clumps of brush, shrubs, and trees. By breaking this up, and having low ground cover, we protect the soil, so we don't have any of those landscape erosion issues, but we break up the mass of vegetation that goes and threatens these homes. This will be a lot of work for the homeowners in the next several years, but this gives us the authority and the opportunity to educate them, and to help them develop a program. They also have the ability to opt into the fuel modification program, which means they can do a formal landscape program, as opposed to just breaking it up, it's a trade-off, if they keep what they have, they can keep invasive species, or, what they do, a fuel mod, if they do a fuel modification landscape program, then we have a very specific plant palette that traditionally uses fire-resistant material. So there's pros and cons on both sides, but the ultimate goal is to reduce vegetation. And then, the last thing is, is that we're changing our management program in the hazardous reduction areas, it currently is an alternating-year program, so we see these areas every other year, the very first thing I did when I saw this, is that we're changing this to an annual program, my inspectors will be there every year.
And I'm going to hop in here, Councilman Hurdman had asked for a quick update, as well as for disaster preparedness and community outreach. You may have heard the term ready, set, go, and it's prevalent up and down the state, and in and around the county, actually, and we introduced this back in 2012 here in Newport Beach, but it, with a change in leadership at the time, it just didn't grow legs, so Kevin, back- So, Kevin Bass here comes to us from the Orange County Fire Authority and is very adept at it and understands it pretty well, so he wants to reintroduce it, and I'll let him give a quick overview on exactly what it entails.
So, the Ready, Set, Go program is a national program that was adopted by the state of California, and CAL FIRE has programs ready for each city or community that wants to adopt it. Essentially, the three components: ready is to improve your home, vegetation management, and home hardening strategies are available from the, what I would call, less expensive, like changing out your vent screens, so that embers are not going through those vent screens that are in your home, to the more elaborate, which is replacing your windows with double pane windows, replacing your roof with a tile roof or Class A roof, or even more so, you can go full Chapter 7A in the building code that does the total exterior siding for ember-resistant and flame-resistant construction. From the ready part, now we're getting to set. We want homeowners to be aware that they may have to evacuate. They should draw up a list. They should be ready to grab those materials, medication, clothing, memorabilia, things that are very important to them. Know where they are, have it ready, have your checklist, so that when you see that evacuation order, or even before the evacuation order, you're not scrambling. And if you're not scrambling, you're ahead of the game. Once you're ahead of the game, you're able to pull it all together, get it in, and leave ahead of the evacuation order. The intent is to educate our homeowners to be aware of red flag days, put your plan into action, and have everything loaded and ready in case something happens. They leave before the evacuation order. The OC alert is great, but then, everybody's on the road at the same time. If you are ahead of the game, you're ahead of the traffic. Anyways, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, the chief and I are available.
Any questions up here? Mr. Hurdman.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you. Thank you for the update. I asked for it, so, good job. Thank you.
I'm glad we had it. That was a good idea. I have a question. Since we are, if we proceed to modify our code and increase those requirements on homeowners to be more vigilant, is there any way that this has become standard, operating knowledge for homeowners or working with the real estate community? Or, I mean, each home in this area, these areas, should be identified as residing in the wildlands?
So, part of the program for the defensible space designation is that staff will be coordinating with IT to identify potential properties. Then, we're gonna go out and we're gonna designate those properties for being part of the defensible space inspection program. Once we've identified that those properties, I will consult with the chief. Once we're in agreement, those property owners will be notified that they'll be part of that program, and as they're part of that program, they'll be notified of the state codes that allow this authority, the city code that allows the authority, and then we start to help them with identifying how they can make improvements. We aren't gonna just go in there and say, "Thou shalt." We're gonna go in there and help.
And that's very good. I would think through the homeowner associations, all those properties are part of, have a homeowner association, residence association.
Every place that has a homeowner's association simplifies our task, because then we can go through the property owner, property management company. It's the individual properties that are gonna take a little more intensive work. Example would be on the Buck Gully and the Morning Canyon properties. They're not part of an identified HOA. They are more of a loose-leaf confederation, but then again, the Corona del Mar Residence Association will be a big help.
Very good. Mr. Avery.
I was at a meeting recently with Catalina Conservancy, and they talked about the interior temperature of Catalina has increased one degree every year for the last four years, the average temp, the high temp. And so, I think we're just in a changing deal here, and it's really important. A few degrees temperature is sort of not a big deal, but apparently it is in terms of what we're looking at, right?
One of the things that we learned from climate change is where vegetation used to have a higher live fuel moisture retention for longer periods throughout the year, you're finding that it's drying up earlier in the season. So, what we used to call "fire season" was the fall, is now year-round. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
So, back to the homeowner that you were just talking about, for example, in Buck Gully, where they've gotta, where they gotta get things cleaned up around their property. That could be expensive, huh?
We're anticipating some pretty expensive projects, not only for vegetation removal, but also having to replant on the slope, so that we don't have erosion. So, the program that we're gonna be developing is going to be what we would call an action plan. As they make those milestones, we're gonna call them in conformance. So, in this instance, each individual property owner is gonna have maybe a one-year, two-year, three-year action plan in order for them to be able to spread that cost and spread the work out, so that you don't have one winter where everything's ripped up. Well, maybe only a portion is ripped up, and then it's replanted, and next year, another portion is ripped up and replanted. The intent is, is we have to worry about the integrity of those slopes, particularly on Buck Gully. We have to look at both elements. We have to make sure that the lot's gonna stay where it is, as well as protected when a fire comes.
In a state like ours, where wildfires, fires are very prevalent, do you know if there's any grant money available to help homeowners out that the city might apply for?
We are looking at wildland fire grants that come through other programs that are actually managed by, trying to remember the phrase, it's the Fire Safe Councils. So, you have to establish a Fire Safe Council. You create a community-wide protection plan, and then you are able to compete for some of these grants. So, what I'm shooting for is to first kind of wrangle in the problem, and then, at the same time as we're identifying the properties, getting these residential groups together to look at whether or not they want to create a Fire Safe Council.
Mr. Muldoon.
Mr. Bass, do you have any thoughts about neighboring cities using livestock?
The GOAT program is very, very good in Laguna Beach, but the reason why it's good in Laguna Beach is those properties are not protected. What they're clearing out is stuff that's been grazed for generations. The problem with the GOAT program is that goats eat right down to the earth. So, bringing goats into, say, like, Upper Buck Gully wouldn't work, because that's a native habitat restoration area. They're trying to protect what's there. So, trying to herd goats to eat just this and not that, I've already spoken with Ms. Detweiler. She said that program is very helpful.
Thanks for looking into it. That's interesting. Thank you.
So, back to the homes that you'll be monitoring and working with and developing management plans. That's gonna be a lot of work. How many homes are we talking about?
Well, the homes that we're talking about are in Buck Gully and the Morning Canyon. I'm anticipating the ones that are gonna need help, probably around 40 to 50 homes. We have some that have already done some advanced work, so a lot of it has to do with their intentions for the property, how they're using the property. If they're going to scrape the old house and build a new house, there's already laws in place that require them to do a fuel mod plan anyways. So, it may push them forward to building the new home if they're gonna have to do the landscaping anyways.
So, that's already in a state law?
Actually, it's a city law.
City?
Yes, we already have that planned in.
That's good to know.
You knew that.
Of course. All right. Any other questions up here? After now, we'll go to the public. Any comments or questions, please come forward on this item.
Yes, David Tanner, Newport Beach resident. I want to applaud our fire department. I think we're very fortunate to have this department. They do a great job for us. Take my hat off to them, and I agree with everything that they've told you tonight. It's the right direction to go, either at tonight or at some future time. I'd like them to address a couple of things to this council, so that you're aware. One being the effect of the public safety power shut-offs announced by Edison. We heard that. That isn't something we like. It will affect the city. It's only a matter of time. Other issues you briefly mentioned were issues with the regulatory agencies, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, their habitat, their permits that may be needed, the new definition from the Regional Water Quality Control Board of Waters of the State, if that's gonna add a new wrinkle of permit requirements, and of course, the Army Corps of Engineers, their jurisdiction, so, in this. And the last thing I'd like to say is that what they've been talking about is the urban wildland interface, and for the most part, and that is an area of a dimension. It used to be 150 feet, maybe now it's 100 yards. But we saw in these recent fires, high-wind events, where embers were being blown over a mile, and I'd like for them to address the city council with the threat the city faces from that type of a severe high-wind event, and what things can be done about it, and what level of risk that we face. And they don't have to do it tonight, but it's sometime in the future. I'd like the city council to be briefed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good comment. So, please take note. Any other public comments? Seeing none, coming back. Oh, wait. Ms. Curran.
Hi. So, thank you for the presentation. It's two things. The Corona del Mar Residence Association has spent a lot of time with the fire department over the last several years, talking about the potential threats to Corona del Mar and the city. And I personally live about a mile from Buck Gully, so those flying embers will come right to my house. So, we are appreciative of the work that he's doing, and the Residence Association is ready to help talk to the public about these types of efforts on a broad scale, and also, you know, talking to homeowners and helping to craft that message and providing a forum for conversation. So, and I think you know that, so. And another area that interests me is part of the plant palette that our fire authorities referenced is a native plant palette, native plants, which can be used for landscaping. And so, not all, but some. And so, some of the, I've talked with some of you about, how can we use our city parks, which feature native landscaping, and we're actually a leader in the county on that, to show people, if you plant these plants in your neighborhood or in your home, and they're native, they will be attractive, and they may be fire-resistant. And also, which ones are, because that's important, too. So, we looked at my house, and I have a big Toyon branch, the holly berry, and I have a big manzanita, and I thought he was gonna say, "Duh, not so good." But actually, you were okay with those. Yeah. So, it will surprise people. You can put in a Toyon, one gallon, and in five years, it will be 20, how long, 20 feet high, provide a lot of habitat, a lot of erosion control, and it will be fire-safe. So, there's, people appreciate the opportunity to see, kind of, what are we talking about? So, I think that's an opportunity that we could look at as well, is how do we show people the beauty and the fire management properties together?
Are you saying it's fire-safe, it doesn't burn?
I'm gonna let you answer the technical side of that.
All plants eventually burn. There are plants that propagate fire, for example, pine trees. They live because of fire. They get to spread themselves out. Then, we have palm trees. Palm trees are a big generator of embers, particularly the dead fronds. So, there are species of trees, shrubs, and ground cover that we do not recommend, and then there are plants that are naturally more resistive, and those are the ones that we do recommend. In our field guideline, we have plants that are shown as non-desirable and desirable. At that point, then, we work with them as they put their plan together to say, "Good here, not so good there."
Well, thank you. Did you want to say anything else?
Thank you.
I would say, this has been, first of all, it's been an excellent presentation, and certainly for the entire community, not just those parts of the community with the greatest exposures. But I might suggest that we have a broader community meeting about this in the community room, where you can share with the community on a broader basis than those where you have to do a deep dive, specifically neighborhood or street by street, because I think there's so much in the news about the fires, people have concerns, we heard from Southern California Edison, and I think it would be a good public service.
Some people have already tracked me down. For example, the Corona del Mar Association has asked me to come and attend meetings. I've also spoken with several HOA board presidents or board members in the areas that are in Newport Coast up and around the Buck Gully area, and I've explained to them that they're doing a great job on their fuel mod, but we need to look at behind the front line, where you have your great Tuscany setup, while all those Italian Cypresses are Roman candles waiting.
Well, see, people need to know, I think that's really, on a broader basis, I think that would be helpful.
And those are, and those are plans that I'm looking at as soon as I can start finishing one project.
Yeah, sure. Well, we're happy you're doing this. Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to say that this is a perfect example of how community activism works in Newport Beach, because Linda Oath is in the audience. Would you wave to Kevin? Because Linda is the one that came to the Corona del Mar Residence Association with concerns about Buck Gully. When we got involved and went to chip and started saying, "We need to fill this position for the fire marshal," and then the Corona del Mar Residence Association came to this council and asked them to make sure that that was funded, and here we are, just, what, maybe 18 months later, that we've got this position filled, we've got Kevin doing a great job, and we are really excited about being able to feel like we are more protected, especially with Buck Gully. We're very concerned with Buck Gully and Corona del Mars. So, I just think that this is a real example of how community activism in Newport Beach works, and it works really well.
In a very positive way. That's a good comment. Well, thank you, Kevin and Jeff. Very good. Excellent presentation, and thank you. We'll feel a little bit fire-safe, safer tonight. All right. Next item, public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, members of the councils. Pleased to address you tonight. My name is David Tanner, Newport Beach resident. I think many residents don't realize the hard work this council and prior councils have spent to do what they think is in the best interest of the city. Our city has a history of confronting significant challenges head-on and making difficult decisions. Our city leaders often face criticism and disrespect from those with differing views. I, for one, would like to thank this council and our city staff for their hard work and dedication in running an organization which protects our health and safety and provides our residents and visitors with a high quality of life, one that many of us have learned to take for advantage. The citizens of Newport Beach are again facing a new set of significant challenges, perhaps their greatest yet. These challenges are changing the fundamental goals and objectives established in our general plan and reshaping what the city will look like in the coming decades. To meet these challenges, we need to act now and take decisive steps. We've started the process of updating our general plan. This is a misnomer. In reality, the state is in control of our process. The city is incorporating state mandates into general plan, into the general plan, many of which have taken away land use authority from the city. The updated general plan will no longer be dominated by the residents' values and vision. The state has changed the rules. Our general plan will be dominated by the state's values and vision. The number of state mandates is increasing with no signs of letting up. The core of these mandates centers around accommodating projected statewide population growth in urban infill areas such as Newport Beach and mandating housing affordability levels and pricing. While the city council, while this city council and prior city councils have taken prudent steps to make Newport Beach the great city we experience today, the state has rewarded cities like Newport Beach by forcibly taking away many of their land use controls, weakening environmental protections, and adopting mandates residents don't want in an effort to achieve the state's goals and objectives. Again, if we don't take proactive steps now, our quality of life will suffer greatly. A case in point, the council recently received an update on its regional housing needs assessment, or RENA number. The RENA number also includes housing affordability mandates. As the council learned, the RENA number is no longer a target, it is now a mandate. The California Department of Housing and Community Development issued its RENA determination to the Southern California Association of Governments in August, concluding that the region needs to construct 1,344,740 housing units over the next decade. The determination further called for 557,336, or 41.4% of the units to be low-income or very-low-income housing. This more than, this is more than triple the RENA for the SCAG region during the 2014 to '21 compliance period, which called for zoning for the potential construction of 438,030 housing units. The number of housing units the state is mandating the city must build is an extremely bitter pill to swallow, and is not what the majority of residents want. The state knows this and has put in place penalties to ensure the city's housing allocation is met. If we don't reach the RENA housing allocation within the allocated timeframe... If we don't reach the RENA housing allocation within the allocated timeframe, penalties can include cutoff of state funding, fines, more frequent housing element updates, measures to streamline.
How much, how much more do you have? You want to finish? How much?
Another minute or two.
Oh, one minute. Okay, go ahead.
Measures to streamline approval and construction of housing projects, removal of environmental protections, as well as the threat of litigation. Just look at Huntington Beach. The state RENA allocation process is not arbitrary. The state and SCAG, SCAG are using a methodology, a formula. The city of Newport Beach's RENA allocation is 2,764 housing units, or approximately 7,000 new residents. In contrast, the city of Laguna Beach's RENA number, RENA allocation is 55 housing units, or approximately 138 residents. If I were grading Laguna Beach's performance based on what the majority of the residents want, I would give Laguna Beach an A, a nine and a half on a scale of one to 10. I'm not saying Newport Beach is the same as Laguna Beach, or that Newport Beach should become Laguna Beach. However, consider these questions. Is Laguna Beach going bankrupt? Are they no longer a tourist destination? Has their quality of life plummeted? Is Laguna Beach no longer a desirable place to deliver work? I will let you grade our city's performance. The dramatic increase in Newport's RENA number should have come as no surprise, and yet it was. What I am advocating is that we update our philosophy and develop an offensive strategy to counter the metrics used by the state to better protect our quality of life. The state is using our good intentions and, intentions and our success against us. I can provide my recommendations on how to do this, but until you understand these metrics and how the pieces of the puzzle fit together, my words are meaningless. One way to learn for yourself is to ask SCAG the following question. If a city wanted to get a high RENA number, what would it have to do? If Newport Beach follows SCAG's recommendations, Newport Beach will continue to be allocated a high RENA number. If, on the contrary, Newport Beach wanted to lower its RENA number, Newport Beach will have to make changes, significant changes. A second case in point, for a couple of decades, we have implemented the planning concept
Okay, we're way over time. How many, much, oh my.
Hey, I'll just skip to the closer. I asked the council to have staff identify the metrics used by the state, so that we can proactively use this information to adjust our philosophy and develop an offensive strategy to better achieve the vision of the majority of our residents, and better protect our quality of life. This will be a tough challenge, perhaps the toughest challenge of any Newport Beach City Council. You will have to make difficult decisions, you will certainly face criticism and disrespect from those with differing views, but it's the right thing to do, and now is the right time to act. And I have a printout of the whole presentation for you, if you care. Thank you.
Well, and I'm sorry to have rushed you through, but your points are extremely important, and I appreciate that, we all appreciate that. And there's going to be a lot more communication from our community development folks, because our life is going to change in Newport Beach because of the mandates that have come from Sacramento, and if there is something to do, that we can do about it, that's fantastic. But I, this is serious business, isn't, this is way overreach, in my personal opinion, of Sacramento, and, and taking away power from local government, and I appreciate you making these statements this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I will just say in summary, if we don't change, we can expect more of the same.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Tanner. I appreciate it. Any other public comments? Seeing none? All right. Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss items 4A, 1 through 3, including meeting with real property negotiators, Grace Leong, Simone Georgis, and Lauren Whitlinger, to provide direction to them as to price and terms of payment. In regards to the properties located at 4200 Campus Drive in Newport Beach, which is leased by Avis Rent-A-Car System, LLC, and owned by DEKK Associates. And the city council will also meet regarding 3175 Airway Avenue and 1885 Anaheim Avenue, which are both located in the city of Costa Mesa, and are owned or leased by the city of Costa Mesa.
We are in recess until 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening. Call the meeting to order for the October 22nd meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report, please?
There's a brief closed session report. In regards to item, excuse me, items 4A through 3, which are the potential sites for a homeless shelter, the city is continuing to negotiate with the owners and lessies of those properties, but we have no reportable action at this time.
Okay. We have Reverend Dr. George Akuzi, St. John the Divine Episcopal Church of Costa Mesa, who will lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Council Member Avery. Please stand.
This evening, we come together to lend gravity to the proceedings, and to remind ourselves, in this great city of Newport Beach, of the common aspirations of a peaceful society and prosperity to all members. Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of love, Spirit of life, Spirit of community, Spirit of peace and justice, we ask your blessings tonight for us gathered here, and those who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Remind our leaders, Lord, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibilities and ours at the same time, to serve the common good of all. Remind us that no matter where we live, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh or atheist, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that we are called to respect and protect the least of those among us, especially our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are angry, the homeless, those who are ill in body, mind, and spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins of the society, and those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. We pray for the agenda of the day set before us this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our, our beloved city of Newport Beach. Grant us the wisdom and courage to speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen, being guided by the Spirit of community, justice, and love. May we act wisely and well, for we pray in your most blessed name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. Through the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to insist in the preparation of the, of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are, are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in silent mode.
City, now is the time for city council announcements, news, new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas, and oral reports from city council on council activities, committee activities. Mr. Avery?
I just have one item, and it was, it was a fun one. I went to an event hosted by local impresario Buck Johns to celebrate the 25th reunion anniversary of the 1994 Harbor High School football team's great 14-0 season. And out of that, a book was produced, and this was also a sort of a launch party for the book. It was 14 weeks, the most probable, improbable football season in the history of just about anywhere, was the win, because nobody had any expectations at Newport Harbor High in 1994. I think they were, they were set up to be last by all the oddsmakers, and it was a real fun evening. I think our mayor pro tem will have something to say as well. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield?
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Yes, I also attended the celebration of the 1994 Harbor High School team. Although my wife is an alum, I'm an El Toro alum, so I had to duck out early, but it was great to support our local, local legends on the football field. We have a couple exciting things coming up for us all to celebrate. Obviously, we have Halloween, and then we have an event at Howard Park on the Saturday, subsequent Saturday, right? So, if you want to meet my son, please come out. He'll be in a lion outfit. Thank you.
A lion? Oh, okay. Ms. Brenner?
Yes, I met with city staff to discuss the Traffic Affairs Commission. Again, I've been meeting with them quite often since I brought that subject up, and their recommendation is that we add to the Planning Commission and call, change the name to Planning and Traffic Affairs Commission, and that I would like to bring back to a future council meeting for us to talk about whether we think traffic is something that we would like to see a separate commission for, or see us change the focus a little bit of our Planning Commission. It would need to be done through a city charter amendment, so that's the reason that I'd like to bring that back to the council to discuss. The Local Business Advancement Subcommittee made up of Jeff and Diane and I met with the Newport Beach Restaurant Association bid members to discuss ways to support their efforts. I met with Russ Fluter on a project he has on the peninsula, which is being challenged at the California Coastal Commission. I attended the regular meeting of the CDM Chamber Governmental Affairs Meeting to report on city activities, and hear Senator John Morlock speak. Will, Diane, and I attended the regular Finance Committee meeting, where a report that I had requested was brought back to the Finance Committee, which gives detailed information about current leases that the city has negotiated with nonprofits for below-market value. And I'd like to ask Leilani if that report could be entered into the public record for tonight's meeting as an addendum.
Fully noted.
Will and I met with the public regarding the election reform proposals created by our Subcommittee made up of Brad, Will and I, and Aaron and Leilani, and it was a very well-informed contingent of citizens that attended, including former city attorney Tully Seymour, and we will be considering all those suggestions as we move forward. The Education and Outreach Subcommittee of the Homeless Task Force met with consultants engaged by the city to provide feedback and suggestions on our webpage, to make it more user-friendly, make sure that people are able to get the information they need about what's happening with the homeless situation on that website. And we also worked on the no panhandling signage that our council voted to move forward with, and Will actually came up with this version that we think we are going to adopt, to have this posted in the city where it's appropriate for us to be able to discourage people from giving to panhandlers. We know that without any reward, that behavior will be extinguished, so we're hoping for that. And we're also working on a handout that we can give to people to help them understand where they can give that would be more effective. Speaking of homelessness, I am having my very first town hall meeting on Saturday at 9:00 AM at the Corona Del Mar Fire Station in the example set by the Babo Island Improvement Association. They have their meetings at 9:00 AM on Saturdays in their fire station, and they get a lot of attendees. So, we're approaching it from that same perspective, and we're going to be giving an update on homelessness, but we also are going to be talking, we'll have city staff there to talk our, about our construction design standards that we're talking about changing as far as the third-story massing and the other possibilities there. So, I want my district and, and the people in our community to give feedback on those, so that when I come back to council, I'll have a way of indicating what the people in my district are thinking about that. We also will be talking about short-term vacation rentals. Grace and Will and I were at the League of Cities Conference in Long Beach this last week, and the two issues I heard most about there was homelessness and short-term vacation rentals, and the challenges that they are for our communities. So, we've been working together with our Subcommittee, which is Jeff and Diane and I, on the short-term vacation, short-term vacation rentals, and what kind of changes we'd like to see in those regulations. So, that will be discussed at my Saturday morning town hall meeting, so I'm following in Diane's example for that. Let's see, what else? We have, well, we'll have a ballot at that, so that people can actually vote on those things, because I'd like to have something substantial that I can bring back and say, this is what people think. We also will have an update on undergrounding of electrical lines, fire prevention, and the water rate increase. On Monday, I visited with Charles Klob and Nancy Scarborough to observe the delicate ballet of cars, bicyclists, and pedestrians working their way through Newport Heights to get to school and work, and today I met with the Pedestrian Bike Safety Subcommittee to discuss. Additionally, Diane and I met today with Phil Greer, representing the families of rowers at the Newport Aquatic Center, to discuss possible options moving forward in that regard. I think that's it for me.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman?
The, our Recreation and Senior Services Department, this week in partnership with the American Red Cross, and our Emergency Services Coordinator Katie Ng, held a disaster shelter exercise on Wednesday at the Oasis Senior Center. There's a couple of pictures up there. The exercise was attended by about 40 staff and focused on our responsibilities in the event of emerg, an emergency operations center and shelter activation. In addition to the informational presentation, there was a mock shelter exercise to simulate registration, setting up a dormitory, information area, feeding and general best practices for shelter management. Orange County Social Services and Newport Mesa Unified School District were also there and participated. So, just want the community to know that these kinds of exercises do take place, and that in the event of a natural disaster, our staff is very much aware of what needs to be done. I did have a short-term lodging town hall meeting on October 14th that was really well-attended, standing room only, and a lot of people had very meaningful input on short-term, on, Joy calls them vacation rentals, I call it short-term lodging, it's basically the same thing. After Joy's town hall on this, then our next step, I just want the community to know, will be for our Subcommittee to reconvene, take all this meaningful input that we've had, incorporate it, if appropriate, into the amendments to the existing ordinance on this, and then we'll be ready to bring it to council for presentation to them, discussion, and action, hopefully. I attended the Corona Del Mar Residents Association meeting this month, and gave a report to that group on council activities, and then a half an hour later was at the Chamber Government Affairs Meeting doing the same thing. And then about an hour after that, I attended the Babo Island Merchants Association meeting for the first time in a long time. And this morning, I too spent some time at the Klob residence up in Newport Heights, just observing traffic patterns of kids going to and from school. The Klobes have extended an invitation to us to do that, and it was very much appreciated. And I was impressed with the orderliness of how kids on bikes, people in cars, people on foot, are getting themselves to and from school. It was very orderly. Root for Change is a Stanbridge University-driven initiative, there's something up on the screen for you about that, that creates partnerships between the university and local cities by planting trees in various locations across Southern California in an effort to help the environment. Stanbridge University's community outreach program, Root for Change, had its second planning event in the, in our city on Sunday, October 13th, just last Sunday. planning event in our city on Sunday, October 13th, just last Sunday. Their first Root for Change event was held in June 2019 and took place at East Bluff Park with 80 volunteers who planted over 100 California native trees. This was a great success, and the plants are currently thriving. Their second Root for Change was held at Harborview Park and included city staff alongside 50 volunteers from the university. During this event, 200 California native plants and 80 California native trees were planted. Shade Tree Nursery donated all materials with no cost to the city. They're planting another Root for Change initiative for Newport Beach in 2020. So we just want to thank all of Stanbridge University volunteers and to Shade Tree Nursery for the donation of the products itself. And then I am a trustee on the County Vector Control Board, and I just want to give you stats for this last month. There were 10 service requests in our city for mosquito abatement. Seven swimming pools were treated. 34 hours were spent inspecting gutters and treating. 166 underground areas treated and acres of flood channels treated, 5.4. As far as West Nile virus is concerned, there are two new cases in the county, one in the city of Fullerton and one in the city of Placentia. And to date, we have seven total in the county of human infections with the West Nile virus. Over 5,000 mosquito samples have been tested to date with 197 testing positive, that's the mosquitoes themselves, for West Nile virus. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thanks. A lot of the things I was going to talk about have been mentioned. So real quick to follow up on Councilmember Brenner's point about the political reform discussion, that will actually be, we are incorporating a number of the comments, and that'll come back to the next council meeting. So we'll be able to do that. Visit Newport Beach. They had their annual marketing dinner. I was able to fill in for the mayor during that. It was really nice and gave out some really nice awards as well. Newport Harbor event, that's been mentioned a couple of times, that was really fun. And then coming up on Friday, we've got Battle of the Bay between Harbor and CDM. So for, for three hours, we can be a city divided, but no matter how it ends, we'll come back together, I promise. We also have the United Way event tomorrow night. Do we have a slide for that one? So this is, United Way has gone around the county to present Homelessness 101. We've asked them to come in and present in our city. It's going to be tomorrow night. You can register for, so we can make sure we have enough spots. It's tomorrow night, 6:00 to 8:00 over in our friend's room, which is just right over there in our, our library. And then I'll be attending the ACCOC Housing Forum on Friday. And then, you know, Stanbridge has done that for a while, and that's, that's pretty impressive, how many trees. We ought to bring them back in for proclamation and celebrate that, because that's, that's pretty impressive. So let's see if we can do that sometime in the next few meetings. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. A couple events that bear noting, in addition to what's also been mentioned, that I had the honor of presenting to the flotilla 61 of the U.S. Coast Guard Academy Auxiliary before the Harbor Commission in our council chambers a week ago. And it was really quite an honor to recognize that the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, which is, does stationed operations here in Newport Beach, they conducted 324 hours of patrols in Newport Harbor and other local waterways this past year in support of aid to navigation, anti-pollution, and general boater safety, as well as having staff 10 public information booths at local boat shows, marinas, yacht clubs, and special events, and conducted more than 65 voluntary safety inspections of boats, trailered or on moorings or in the marina slips of Newport Harbor, and 175 boater safety classes, equivalent to 472 hours of instructions. So the whole team was here, and it, they were, we were honoring them, and they are honored to serve the harbor, Newport Harbor, and keep us safe, help to keep us safe, and our waters easily trafficked. So it was an honor to honor them. And I did, speaking of water, did it, my second tour of the groundwater replenishment system at OC Water District. And we are very fortunate that our council forefathers and mothers, I guess, were prescient enough many years ago, not only to create the underground water table system that we have where we draw 75% of our water from underground, but through the funding of the water replenishment system is that we are, we have a world-class system that serves Newport Beach in replenishing recycled water that none of us would even know. And I have, I actually, we've all done this and take, take pictures of ourselves drinking this water, that it is world, known, we are known, it's located in Fountain Valley, but it serves Newport Beach, known worldwide for this system of water replenishment that is truly remarkable. And while we participate in the state-mandated programs on water conservation, which is important to do, and we will do that, we do have a very healthy water system, underground water system, and water replenishment system, and we also get water from the Metropolitan Water District. So our water supply, particularly with the heavy rains last winter, is an excellent supply, excellent supply. This weekend, we, everybody in Newport Beach, stand notice, we have a lot going on on Saturday. You are going to be busy. So first, you have Councilmember Brenner's Town Hall from 9, what did you, 9:00 to 10:30?
9:00 to 10:30.
And then you make your way over here to the Civic Center, and we have, as you see on the screen, Civic Center Green for Newport Together, our community fair from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There is food, fun, and games, but most importantly, an opportunity for the community to tell us what they love about Newport Beach as we prepare for the general plan update. So this is a really, a fun way to engage the community, to come and participate and have their, have an opportunity to express their vision, their dreams for what Newport Beach should, what kind of city we want to be as we go through the general plan process. So the General Plan Steering Committee thought it would be a creative way to engage the community, bring your family, bring children, and in their costumes, and there will be Fun for All. It's free, and I think we're going to learn a lot, and the community will learn a lot. And a number of nonprofit agencies will also be participating as well. And after, so your day is not done. After the community fair, head back to Corona Del Mar for the annual Halloween Spooktacular at Grant Howard Park, where you can meet Mr. Cannon Muldoon in his costume. And that event for Halloween is from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00, and there will be family fun, including trunk-or-treating, a haunted maze, costumes, and prizes, and more. So it's a fun-filled, family day of having fun and learning a lot about what's going on in Newport Beach. And today, I just wanted to read an announcement that came over the wires from our police department, and it's, I thought it would be an important message to share with the community, that National Teen Driver Safety Week, and it's particularly relevant, we have a lot of teens in the audience tonight, is October 20th through 26th, and the Newport Beach Police Department is asking parents and guardians to take the time to discuss with their teen the rules of the road intended, road intended to keep them safe. Driving remains the most dangerous activity for teens. Vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death for teens 15 to 18 years old. In 2017, 2,247 people were killed in the United States in crashes involving a teen driver aged 15 to 18. So like anything new for teens, it takes practice and years of practice to be a good driver. So parents and teens, take special note that we all need to pay extra attention to safe driving. Okay, that's it for my announcement. So do we have any public comments on the items that the council has just announced or any, or any of our oral reports? Please come forward if you have public comments, just on this announcement section. This is not the general public comment section. Seeing none? Diane?
I had, I had one thing I failed to say that I wanted to mention. I wanted to tell Reverend Okusi that that was a beautiful invocation. Thank you so much. That was really well done and sums up a lot of the feelings that I think we on the council have about how we, we enact our duties. So thank you very much.
And thank you for being here this evening. All right. Now we'll move to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, and these are not matters for discussion. This is merely to see if three members would like to discuss a matter at a future date. Do we have three council members to bring back?
Madam Mayor? Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
I will have to recuse myself due to a real property entrance, interest on.
Not on the first one, though. Oh, you do on the first one?
No, on, on the Heights.
Okay, but on the first one, we can, then you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have three council members to bring back an item for consideration of prohibiting all electric or motorized bicycles or vehicles from, from the Peninsula Boardwalk brought forward by Councilmember Duffield? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, whatever it is.
So the city clerk stepped out, so I'll, I'll be the city clerk for a moment. So everyone's in favor except for Mayor Pro Tem O'Neil and Councilmember Muldoon.
All right. Do we have three council members to bring back an item for, to evaluate opportunities for installation of protected bicycle lanes with curbs or physical barriers without reducing parking spaces and intersection bulbouts within Newport Heights, brought forward by Mr. Muldoon?
With Councilmember Hurdman voting no, the motion carries 5-1. And I just want to note that the previous item, I had a real property interest conflict.
All right. And Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar. Those are items 1 through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine or all be acted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, council, any items to pull from the consent calendar, items 1 through 10? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Duffield? Mr. Muldoon?
Yes, I have a recusal on item number seven, due to the wireless component that could be considered in this with the traffic light synchronization for my business in telecommunications and ownership in a wireless company, or I'm sorry, a marketing company for wireless. And then I have one more. One second, Madam Mayor. Thank you. 15. Oh, that's it for the consent calendar. Thank you.
What, I didn't? Oh, all right. Ms. Brenner? Mr. Hurdman?
I have none.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm pulling 11.
Did you pull in?
11.
11. And I have none. Do we have a motion?
Yes, move approval of the consent calendar with item number one being the minutes partially amended with, which was in our packet and at the front, seven showing Councilmember Muldoon's recusal, and item number 11 being pulled by me.
I'll second the motion.
Any council comments? Let's, oh, we have public comment. Let's have public comment on the items that are not being pulled. Please come forward. Any public comments?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is David Farian. I'm the chief executive officer for the California Waste and Recycling Association. Wanted a chance to address you on item number nine briefly. Background on our association, we're a local trade association made up of waste and recycling companies operating in the Orange and LA County area. Members that enjoy a non-exclusive franchise here in this city are California Waste System, Direct Disposal, Holloway Rubbish, Universal Waste, and Ware Disposal. We know there's been a lot of changes at the state level, so we're certainly supportive of the city and their endeavor to meet their mandates, AB 341, 1826, and SB 1383. But tonight before you is an item where they're making some amendments to the non-exclusive franchise agreements, and we have a few concerns that we'd like to raise about those. The first one is there's been some pretty significant modifications to the insurance requirements, and we recognize the city needs to be protected. We do run large trucks, and we support that, but we also believe that there may be some additional discussion that needs to be done with that. There's some modifications being proposed to the Cal Green portion of the diversion mandates, which could ultimately escalate as the agreement moves forward. That's another item. And then the last one is when we talk about all the laws that have been passed, the hauler's ability to continue to meet those will require continued investment in the community to make sure that your commercial businesses are in compliance, buying new trucks, new containers, processing facilities, and so on. So we'd like to have an opportunity to talk about the length of the agreement, knowing that there's only four years left. Just to kind of wrap things up, one of the things that's interesting about this process, the haulers received a letter on September 20th identifying this proposed amendment, and obviously, the city's a signatory on the agreement, as are the haulers, yet you had the ability to, you know, basically raise issues through a letter, but there was no meeting that was really happened to really discuss these changes. And we believe, you know, some are substantive, and, you know, really, the ability to have the due diligence and the opportunity to review those, talk about them, and ultimately negotiate. I would guess if the haulers proposed an amendment to the agreement, the city wouldn't sign it without having some due diligence on their side. So I guess we feel a little bit like maybe there should have been a process to at least allow for that. Staff absolutely gave notice through letter. We actually responded with a couple of letters. You'll probably find those in your email. I apologize for them being short. But I guess in closing, I guess we would have really liked to have had some dialogue with staff, the opportunity to maybe talk about some of these items. And then the other thing we would make a request tonight, that the council consider maybe bringing back an opportunity for an extension to the agreement beyond 2024 because of the type of investment that our haulers are going to make. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Just as a courtesy to our speaker, is Mr. Webb here or Micah?
I have a simple.
I'm sorry?
Are you going to pull it?
I'm just going to request a continuance with an option for extended term in the staff report. It's basically an amendment to the motion.
Okay, well, let's just, if you would be so kind, just answer some clarification on the process.
So, yes, thank you, Mayor and council. There is, was a process, and as the speaker referenced, David, we did send out a letter and advised them that we were going to be making changes to the franchise. In the letter, we asked them to call us or contact us. We'd be happy to meet with them. We did have eight comments from haulers, I know that was responded to, but we, I don't know if we had a meeting with particularly some of his group, which he represents, but the opportunity was there. On the flip side of that, two of the major Tier One haulers that he does represent, we did meet individually beforehand and advise them we were making changes, and actually exhibit E to the new franchise, and I had some of the recommendations they wanted in that, in the new franchise. So I think the opportunity was there and the notice was there to that.
I'll just pull it.
All right. It's going to be pulled. Do you have other comments to make on the, please come forward. On which item is that?
On number nine.
But we're, it's been pulled.
It's going to be pulled, so it'll be an opportunity.
You'll be, you'll be able to speak in a moment. We're just going.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, well, there are no other items, or any other items on the consent calendar? Seeing none?
Sorry, who seconded the?
I did.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion to include number nine being pulled.
Okay.
All right. Any other, oh, did you have any comments? You just, okay, let's, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Mr. Hurdman.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Let's deal with item number nine. Staff, if you want to give a brief report, please.
Yes, if you would, then I'll go ahead and turn this over to Deputy Director Micah Martin. He's got a few points on this and give you a brief background, and then we can take any questions you have.
Okay.
Good evening, council, and members of the public and staff. My name is Micah Martin. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works, and I'll just talk to you briefly on a quick presentation here on this item. We've prepared some slides for you. So if you recall, back in September 10th, we brought a municipal code amendment to council for re- for review and approval, and that was approved. What sparked all this is we were approached by Cal Recycle back in 2017 on their annual review, where they identified the city was out of compliance under AB 341 and 1826. So as a part of our commitment to them, to bring ourselves back into compliance and to perform, to avoid further action by the, by the committee, we agreed to amend our municipal code and in doing so amend our franchise agreement to, to match the requirements that Cal Recycle is asking us for. So this should be a familiar side to you. This is all the legislation that prompting the need for a lot of these updates and changes. A lot of these come into effect by 2020, some of them as far out as 2025. So that's prompting a lot of the need to initiate a lot of these changes and requirements.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes.
Back to the legislation. So this is statewide, correct? All cities are?
This is statewide. This is state legislation, yes.
Are having to comply, obviously, with state mandates?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what has the city responded? How has the city responded? So we've, we put together a council subcommittee that meets regularly to talk about these issues and to get direction and move towards our implementation of these changes. September 2019, we approved the ordinance revision requiring the businesses to recycle. And then today, we have the revised ordinance that, I'm sorry, today, we, following the revised ordinance, we bring to you the amendment to the non-exclusive commercial franchise agreement, which, which is the item for you right now. So this is the next logical step in the process in implementing the changes that are required by Cal Recycle. So the current agreement, it's a non-exclusive commercial hauler franchise agreement. It was last updated in 2017. The current franchise is effective until 2024. It currently contains hauler performance requirements that have helped to increase the city's AB 341 and AB 1826 compliance rates. However, after administering the revised franchise for over 20 months, amendments are needed to comply with applicable state laws. So more mandates have come into effect since that revision, more requirements from the state, so initiating further change to this revision, so.
Are these requirements, are these mandates effective today or of 2024?
Some of these changes have been in effect since 2012 and 2017, but as of 2020, the percentages increased, and the requirements continue to increase and escalate as regards to the amount of diversion we, we are able to produce.
Okay. All right.
So just a summary of the proposed amendments that are on this agenda item for tonight. There's a detailed description of the hauler's diversion program. So we went into further detail as to what the diversion program needs to be, how they are to be working directly with the businesses to implement a program and to see it through successfully, to produce the percentage of diversion that's required by the state. Exhibit E further supports that effort by giving detailed direction to Tier One franchises regarding the steps to implement the state compliant diversion program at a business or multifamily property. So further reiterate on that, currently, the way the franchise stands right now is the hauler is solely responsible for the success of that program and the diversion numbers created from that. With this revision on Exhibit E, it allows us as a city to work more closely with the hauler and the business in implementing the program and achieving the desired results from that. So if at any time a hauler comes into contact with the business who's not willing to or able to comply with the requirements, then the city would work with the business directly as opposed to holding the franchisee accountable for that. So that's, that change there is to the benefit of the hauler. Further, it provides franchisees an avenue to refer noncompliant customers to the city for enforcement. So with our municipal code change, we are now able to enforce these requirements, and fines could be levied if necessary. This is the insurance requirements. Just to briefly cover, the city has the right at any time to adjust its insurance requirements, but we felt it appropriate during this franchise amendment to address that now, as it's an opportunity to ensure that the city is covered appropriately for the insurance coverages related to this, this scope of service. So here's just a quick breakdown. You see in the first column there, that's our current insurance requirements, and the column on the right is, is the insurance requirements we're proposing. So as you can see, we've been very light on our requirements, and we feel with the amount of responsibility that's being required, we've increased that, and these changes are consistent with what other cities require. And as, as cities are coming online with amendments to their franchises, their insurance rates are increasing to the level that ours are as well.
Mayor Potem has a question, please.
Yeah, I was, I was about to say, you didn't pull these numbers out of a hat. Where'd they come from?
So we've, we've compared these with other cities, and I think Barbara can speak to this a little bit more better than I can.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Salvini. I'm the Human Resources Director and the Risk Manager for the city. The numbers did not come out of thin air. When we looked at this agreement, the original agreement was entered into in 2007, and the insurance limits really have remained unchanged since that time. With the advent of various legislative mandates and the increased compliance requirements on the haulers, we took a look at that. We also consulted with our insurance broker. We consulted with our outside risk consultant. We did look to other cities, as Micah mentioned, to see what their requirements were, not necessarily to dictate what we would do, but to make sure that we were not coming up with requirements that were out of sync with what other agencies were doing. And we identified the largest exposures for this agreement related to auto liability and pollution liability. So for that reason, that's why you see the larger increases as opposed to the general liability, which there is exposure, but to a lesser extent, so that was only increased to $2 million, $4 million.
And pollution liability is?
Pollution liability is one of the primary exposures, and the cleanup costs can be excessive. We have reservoirs, we have storm drains that drain down to the ocean, and in the event there's a pollution incident, those can be quite costly. So we felt $10 million adequately protected the city against that risk.
Okay. And I will just say real quickly, the subcommittee includes Mayor Dixon and Councilmember Brenner and me, and we are a city that is particularly focused in on the safety of our, of our waste haulers, as you can understand and imagine. So when we're talking about insurance liability, this is something that is very important to our council and to our residents, and so this is something where either, even if for some reason this didn't pass, my suspicion is that we would still be increasing these unilaterally, the way that we're allowed to under the contract as it is. So it's worth noting. I have a couple other points, but not on this.
Let me, I'm sorry, wait. Well, I just have some questions. If we adopt these changes, when are they effective?
The changes, so the way, the way the franchise agreement works, what we're presenting to you tonight is to accept this as the model franchise that we want to start implementing moving forward. So as franchise haulers come on board and start signing on to this new franchise, we'll be coming back to you with those franchise haulers in that agreement with public hearing for you to ratify the.
Individual agreements?
Yes.
They come back individually?
Yes.
All right, so just for purposes of understanding, for current franchise holders who don't have these terms in their current contract, they come, they come back to us when there was a contract, individual contracts expire?
So current franchisees under the current franchise can remain under the current franchise. They're not forced to enter into this one.
Okay.
This is just an option for them. Like I said, there are benefits to this franchise for the hauler that helps them to conduct their business much more efficiently and effectively, and there's benefits for us as well. If they're in a, if they're in a legitimate franchise now, they can stay in that. There's nothing we can do to force them out of that. It's still a good franchise until 2024. But we've made these changes to help, help the hauler, to help the city with any, you know, new franchisees that come on board, or any existing franchisees that want further leverage to be able to work more closely with the businesses, or to have better reporting opportunities.
But they do have the option to full, reach the end of their existing contract with just 2024, but they know that this is coming when they would re-up for a new contract, new agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And one quick point, just to add on to that, the city does have the right to unilaterally change the insurance levels by giving them 90 days notice, so that's something that could be changed, whether or not they stay with the existing franchise or not.
You're saying we could update this outside the agreement?
Yes, so the agreement provides that for insurance, that the city has the right to basically make unilateral changes.
Okay. Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I'm realizing as I was talking right there that we can really go down some rabbit holes in this discussion, so since Councilmember Muldoon pulled it, it might be worth figuring out what his thought process is, so we can maybe streamline this discussion and not go all the way down all those rabbit holes.
Well, let's, should we let staff just finish the presentation?
Well, I mean, my, I guess my, yeah, but that's my point, is if we're only pulling it for a discrete item, it's probably worth only talking about that discrete reason, because this can go, this can go long.
Unless the crowd came for the trash discussion, I have a quick.
Sure.
Suggestion.
Sure.
I just want to move to extend the term of the agreement so that haulers can get financing with the rest of staff report approved as is. So I believe that would be two years, correct, Mr. O'Neal? Two, two years of allowing financing under this contract for the haulers.
To 2026, 2026, is that what you're saying?
Extended it thus, yes. And everything else seems to ask factor to me.
Oh.
Yeah, I would second that.
All right, so are we debating that motion now? Well, are there any other comments up here? Okay, let's go to public comment on the motion that we're, on the item that includes this motion. Okay. General, Mr. please come forward. Well, I, don't we want to finish the presentation? All right.
My name's George Stragas. I'm here on behalf of LAL Services. LAL Services is a company that has been trying to become a hauler in Newport Beach for about two years and has been delayed because of whatever considerations are happening here. And what I wanted to comment about specifically is the state of California in AB, is it 1826, I think, addressed the issue of self-haulers, of people who simply generate enough waste to meet the statute themselves, and all they're trying to do is haul their own debris. That is not really accounted for in this franchise agreement. It, it basically takes all of the provisions that would apply to someone who is hauling for a business and has customers that need to be monitored in terms of their compliance with the law, and groups the self-haulers with them. The state's legislation allows the city to have a simple certification process for self-haulers, recognizes that all of the provisions that are being required in the franchise agreement would be something that is not necessarily needed for self, self-haulers. And certainly, the insurance requirements are extreme for someone who simply is taking four cubic yards of debris that they've produced, in my client's case, a demolition business where they're tearing a building down and, and taking that debris and hauling it for themselves for their own benefit, and requiring insurance premiums that might cost $75,000 a year or more. So I think the sensitivity was built into the statute, but it's not built into this franchise agreement or the policy of the city. The self-haulers are not being considered in this. In fact, the agreement barely even mentions them as a separate group of people with very different needs and very different impact on the citizens of the city of Newport Beach. So I would ask that this franchise agreement be modified to include something separate for the self-haulers that makes better sense for the small impact that they are having on the community and their ability to simply, in their own business, haul small quantities of debris that happen to meet the four cubic yard standard of the statute. I think the statute allows for it. I think the legislature wanted that sensitivity, and it's not in this agreement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. After we conclude public comments, we'll come back and answer your question. Thank you. Please come forward with a public comment on this item.
I want to say thank you very much. We appreciate the additional two years. We hope you'll support that, and we're prepared to work with your staff to help you keep you in compliance with all those new regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See, none? Come back up here. All right, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, my understanding on self-hauling is that they still have to do business.
I was going to ask that question.
Oh.
Anyway, go ahead.
One more on the, okay, never mind.
Mayor, council members, my name's Tilford Cottam. I own a company called Tight Quarters Demolition. We do quite a bit of work here in town, and our concerns are that we're not in the same categories of these billion-dollar corporations that are trash haulers. We are a self-hauler, as the gentleman before said. We haul our own trash, but in order to come to that $10 million aggregate is almost, for the volume of work we do, is almost impossible to stay in business here that way. We're working on limits right now of the insurance that we have. We've had plenty of insurance all the time, but the $10 million, our insurance agent says it's going to throw you into a completely different category. And also, it moves this price of, or demolition in town will escalate. But I'm, I'm just a bad concern, I'm probably speaking for a few more that probably aren't here, of the demolition contractors in town, but it's definitely going to be a difficulty to stay in business with that type of increase. It's 10 times what we have now, 10 times.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am, if you want to come forward? Sure.
My name is Lori Beekner. I am the owner of Universe of Bobcat &amp; Hauling. I'm one of your Tier Two haulers. Some of the things that you guys are implementing sound really good, but when it comes to the insurance requirements, you will put us out of business completely. We will not be able to work here. And one of the beautiful things about Newport Beach, that you guys are an open city, you let people, I live here personally, so I like choice. I like to choose who I'm going to use. I like to choose, I like to get on the phone, ask prices and things like that. You give that choice to the people in your city, if, who they want to use to haul, or if you're doing a clean out of the garage, you give them that choice. By doing this insurance increase, that is unbelievable to me, that you would, it almost like overnight in 90 days, it takes away that choice, because you're not going to have that many haulers that are going to be able to come in here and be able to work with the community and work with those homeowners that have difficult jobs. Some of them want you to work, you know, on certain jobs that the bigger haulers can't do. So for me, you, I won't be able to work here. It's just too much money out of my pocket. It's sad. I've been here, I've been with you guys for, God, almost 15 years, but this will be the end. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this item? See, none. Staff, do you want to address the individual hauler, small hauler issue?
So yes, this franchise applies only to Tier One and Tier Two. There is a window for self-hauling. I don't know the exact prescription. I think it's four cubic yards and less. They have to be tied to the property like a builder owner, but there is an allowance for that. We could get back to you on that, for those individuals that qualify. For the larger folks, they're Tier Two that haul commercially, they're probably going to have to be applicable to this franchise. Unfortunately, what you heard tonight is some of the things, as you see, the regulations are getting so onerous and restrictive that we, we find that some of the folks may not comply. We have 30 current non-hauler, our commercial franchises now. That field may limit just by the necessity to report and volume, the costs and volume are compatible to each other, so. But we can get you more on self-hauling if you'd like, unless, do you know anything more than I do on Micah? Keith, can you add anything to the self-haul conversation?
I'm Keith Hinkley, Senior Management Analyst over at Municipal Operations. There is a provision inside of the former agreement, and I believe within our regulations, where if you are doing self-hauling, it is intended for a homeowner doing a project. So if you're cleaning out landscape in the backyard, or a small masonry project, or tearing out the cabinet in the kitchen, they can do self-hauling. That was the intention. But if you're doing it as a business, you need to be a franchise hauler in Newport.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments up here? Mayor Potem?
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, we all remember three years ago when, when the garden wall was demoed and the Finley tract flooded. That was, that was done. That was, that was done by a Tier Two hauler. There's a reason why we need the limits that they're at, and I get it, and I really do. I understand that it's, it's tough. The issue on the financing side, but there's a protection side of this that we have to implement at a, at a city level, where when we know how large some of these vehicles are, they get way heavier when they're, they're bringing these, these in, there's a reason why all the other cities have moved forward with limits that are where they are. And given our even recent experience with multiple issues dealing with trash hauling, I don't know, I don't know why we, I don't know how we couldn't if another incident happens and we're out of pocket because there wasn't sufficient coverage.
And just the cost of managing all of them as well. Want to just comment on the motion by extending the contract, just to clarify from my own understanding, to 2026? Is that what we're giving? So does that mean we'd be out of compliance for two years?
I think what you'll have is a small gap. Remember, you have current franchises, 30 of them in place that expire in 2024. Then you have a new franchise that can be picked up that would go to 2026. So technically, when they're, if they're going to stay on their existing franchise, they'd have to jump on the new one for two years. And then whatever council chooses to do, that going forward would be the discussion at the time.
Let me just understand.
But they have coverage. And for the route of investment, a lot of those folks who've been on a franchise since 2017, that's a lot of time already to recapture investment, and then they can almost jump on the new franchise for another two years.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand. So the additional two years, does that do, put us out of compliance in any way for those haulers that go to 2026 instead of renewing their contract in 2024?
Any of the new haulers, anybody who goes to 2026 will sign the new agreement. That's the condition of going the next for two years. And the new franchise requires them to be in compliance with state law, so if anything changes, they'll still, they'll have to adjust.
So they'd have to be anyway? Okay. Any other questions? No? Who made the motion? Mr. Muldoon? Mr. Mayor Potem? Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, now it's time for public comments. Oh, I already did that.
It's 11. I pulled 11.
Oh, you pulled 11?
Yeah.
Cultural, oh, all right.
Only, and I, we do not need staff presentation. And there's only one thing on this entire thing that I'm concerned about, which is the $5,000 to Newport Beach Film Festival. I like the film festival. It's why we give hundreds of thousands of dollars to the film festival as, at the city level for a contract for, for their support. So I'm, I don't think I can support an additional $5,000 through a separate grant program when we already have a contract that is fairly substantial in value.
Motion?
Well, I would move approval in with, of the staff recommendation with the $5,000 being added on to the Arts Commission's $4,000 that it's, that's granting back to itself.
I would second that. All right, any public, any comments up here? No? Any public comment on item number 11, as amended?
Mayor Dixon and members of the City Council, I would like to, Commissioner Wayne Kaufman and I served on the Grants Awards, Cultural Arts Grants Award Committee. This particular grant is very separate and apart from the film festival. This is an education grant that is an outreach to the students of the community in middle school, high school, and seniors in the community who enjoy film, who enjoy having industry seminar with people coming down from the film industry from Los Angeles, who serve in the areas of production, direction, editing of film, and the creative process that is involved in the film. And this, without us funding this, they would not be doing the film seminar for the education outreach in the community. This year, they had planned to film the industry seminar so that the filming of the seminar can be disseminated to Newport Harbor High School, Corona Del Mar, and Sage Hill High School, and even the Oasis Senior Center, because there are many people who live in the community who are seniors, because film is the new media these days. Students are creating film. It is the hot topic in high school and in college and in middle school, to create film and put film on the internet that's done in a less professional manner. But those people who attend the seminar are sometimes not just those that are novices, but they're a little more students in the community who would love to have a profession in the film, you know, world, and attend college with a film as major. So I think that this, this particular grant is very important because it is not actually, it's something very separate and apart. The seminar is here at the city. It's in the Friends Room and the Community Room. It is well-attended, and it's available to everyone and anyone who would like to attend, and it's free of charge. So I'm, I'm just trying to give you a little more information. This is not something that you buy tickets and attend the film festival. This is an industry seminar and is strictly outreach and education.
Have we funded this before?
Yes.
For how many years?
We've been funding it for five years.
And, and this is part of the film festival's outreach into the community?
Right, and they create it on a Saturday so that students can attend. They're not in school Saturday in the weekends. Director Heatherton has more information on the actual schedule for the seminar that has been used in the past, Tim?
Is it, is it what, oh, excuse me, Tim, go ahead.
Oh, well, the only thing I have to add is that it's done on the weekends. They usually do a Saturday in the Friends Room and then a Sunday in the Civic Center. I, I think it appeals to the Arts Commission because it draws a younger demographic. There's a lot of teens and young adults who attend this program because I think film is sort of a hot topic currently. That's my contribution.
Well, is, is $5,000 the total cost, or their other contributors is, or does the film festival, festival underwrite any of this?
They augment some of it themselves. You know, they contribute to this. It's, 7,000 isn't the total cost of the seminar. They actually contribute to the cost of this seminar as well, so that they can have the education outreach.
What, what Mayor Potem was saying is something we all kind of wrestle with. We make, the city makes a contribution of $150,000 a year to the film festival, and then we're still giving more money to a program of the film festival, when could they not just find $7,000 if they support this program? I guess it just begs, this circuitous funding kind of drives us nuts.
If you were to, if you were to grant it the money back to us, we could study it in more depth and give you a, a report on that, and we could fund it and control it a little more from the City Arts Commission, if you wish us to do that.
So it really doesn't need to come through the film festival?
Well, it would be the film festival, but we could fund it as a City Arts Commission program as well and, and be involved. Much like last year, we contribute to the Festival Ballet, which was performed in the city library for two performances, this Nutcracker and then in the Spring Sleeping Beauty. We do that. We sometimes retain funds for programs that maybe were not complete when the application was submitted, but we know they have value. And then we, last year, funded the Island of the Blue Dolphins through Laguna Playhouse. We couldn't actually fund it because we didn't have a grandpa during the year. They came to us with something that had more value, and we knew that Mariners Elementary School hadn't been addressed, and some of the schools on the west side of town. So we put the Island of the Blue Dolphins with our retained funds at Mariners and at Newport Elementary. We could do this, we could provide the funding with more research if you would like that and allow the rest of it to go forward. But I highly recommend that you, you fund this tonight, because if not, I don't feel they would be able to do the film industry seminar.
Let me just ask my colleagues. Ms. Brenner, your comment?
I think our concern is that we get feedback from the community about the disparity of how we're funding different things. And when it looks like the film festival is getting $155,000 from us, and we're taking money back from our Business Improvement District or our Restaurant Association and telling them that we're not willing to fund their efforts, they're saying to us, well, you're funding them at 155,000 now. It makes it hard for us to justify that to other members of the community that also have legitimate needs.
I see. I think the high school students will miss this, and the middle school students, and some of the seniors who attend in our community. I know it's a decision that you have to wrestle with, and I, I understand your position. But I, I would ask that, you know, you perhaps could have a little more research available to you. I don't know how this could be done.
I guess my question is why can't the film festival do it within the $150,000 that the city allocates to them? Have you had that conversation with them?
No, they've, I, I can't say how they spend their money because I'm not involved with the film festival at all. I only attend as a member of the community.
So this isn't really connected to the film festival?
No. This is, this is the Film Festival Industry Seminar. It's an educational outreach that's a subset of the Newport Beach Film Festival that is served up to interested students, seniors, and middle school children who are underserved in the community. That's why we support this grant.
Well, I guess I'm not, I'm more concerned. So it is part of the, the film festival?
They, they announce it in their program, Film Festival Industry Seminar. It is free to the public in the city of Newport Beach, where some of the events.
Who funds it? Is it based on your funding, the Arts Commission?
It's based on our funding and some of their funding as well. And I, I can't tell you who funds it in addition to us. We only see the grant. And I wish I had the grant here. I didn't bring it with me tonight. But it's online. The grant is online, the full grant, the application, so.
I think we're all confused. Okay, thank you.
Oh, let me help with that if you are.
No, it's all right. Let me turn it over to the public if there are any comments from the public.
I wasn't going to say anything about this, but I happen to be one of those seniors that attends these seminars. I love the Newport Beach Film Festival. The, the two that I love this go-round were the one about Disney Animation. There was every age group there. There were little people. There was high school age, middle age, everybody was, the room was packed, it was standing room only. The next one I went to was Women in Film. It was a great seminar, it was, because they're underrepresented in the film industry. And I, this is a whole separate thing because it's free and it's about the creation of the film. It's not the actual film. And I applaud the city for promoting this. I think you should embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none. Mr. O'Neil? Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I'm going to leave my motion as is. And I'll just point out, maybe, this is one of the really big challenges when we're working through arts funding. We have folks who say they love it, and yet we have zero people step up to privately finance any of it. And that's the, that's, that's when we're, when we're reading this, of course, they all sound great. I mean, there, there's music for kids programs and there's all sorts of things. And it's just, it's a legitimately difficult issue when you're working through and saying, no, but this is, this is taxpayer money, this is general fund money that is, it's, it goes toward any, literally anything we want it to, police services, fire services, all of that, and we're choosing what to send it to with, with this. I will say just real quickly, my understanding when we, you know, if we granted it back to the Arts Commission, Arts Commission doesn't have a budget. They don't, they don't spend money. I'm not sure what's going on in terms of this discussion, but the Arts Commission makes recommendations to us for use of this money. So if we granted it back and they had $9,000, that's $9,000 they can come back to the council and ask to spend. Am I understanding that right, Tim? Okay, all right, I'm going to leave my motion as is then.
They can still come back.
Yeah, I had a second.
So it was Mayor Potem, and then who seconded? Mr. Heard, you did, Ms. Brenner?
I need clarification.
You have a question?
Sure. Where would you like to clarify?
I just need to hear it again.
Oh, okay.
Restate the motion, please.
You know what I'm voting on.
Okay. The motion is for staff recommendation with the removal of the $5,000 for the Newport Beach Film Festival to be put back into the, what I would call the $4,000 granting, granted back into the City Arts Commission.
All right, let's vote.
Oh, Dan, wait, can I say something first? Oh, never mind.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Never mind.
Okay.
With Councilmember Brenner abstaining, the motion carries 6-0-1.
All right, I think we're finished with the consent calendar. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Carl Lockman, and I'm here to help your Newport Beach student ambassadors to Okazaki, Japan make their report to you. I will introduce them in just a moment, but first, because maybe not everyone's familiar with this student exchange program, let me explain it a little bit. It's important to understand that the international organization called Sister Cities International was created by President Eisenhower in 1956. Because of his experience overseeing the operations to liberate Europe during World War II, President Eisenhower believed that international peace and prosperity could be furthered by creating friendships between people from different cities around the world. Eisenhower believed these relationships would ultimately lessen the chance of future international conflict and war. Today, unfortunately, our news headlines every day are filled with daily reports of international conflict. So I think you'll agree with me that helping the next generation appreciate different cultures and build friendships with people in other parts of our world are some of the most important things we can do. In 1984, Newport Beach started the Sister, Sister City Association, and the first Sister City friendship with Okazaki, Japan was established. Since then, the city of Okazaki has given the city of Newport Beach many gifts to show just how important this friendship is. There's a very large friendship statue in front of the Central Library, made out of granite, that was shipped here from Okazaki, Japan. There's the bamboo court of the library. In front of the Mariners Branch, the Newport Beach Library, is the 20th Anniversary Statue. And then, in the Irvine Terrace Park, there is the 30th Anniversary Statue, stone Japanese lanterns. And I don't know if you know, but the black pine trees in that park are shipped, were shipped from Okazaki, Japan and planted here like the bamboo. So in more recent years, the sister cities of Antibes, France, and Encinala, Mexico, have also been added to the Sister City Association. But tonight, it's just the report from our Okazaki students. So after an application process earlier this year and selection, these students traveled to Okazaki at the beginning of the summer, and they stayed with host families, got to know their friends, and went to school with them, because the Japanese school year is different than ours. And then just two weeks ago, the Japanese students with their chaperones came here to Newport Beach, stayed in our families' homes, and went to school with our students. So our student ambassadors would like to make their reports, tell us what they've learned. And, but before I do that, let me introduce two members of the Newport Beach Sister City Association that are with us here tonight. First, Lyddie Paulson, if you could stand. Lyddie Paulson is the current president of the Newport Beach Sister City Association. And next, if Connie Skiba can stand, Connie, for over 30 years, has organized and overseen this student exchange program. Over 30 years, this one lady. So first, I'd like to introduce Ms. Megan Lockman, my daughter. Megan, if you can please come up. Megan was the team singer. She learned to sing the Japanese National Anthem in Japanese, and then she sang it there to their city council and at other venues.
Okay. Going to Japan was a once-in-a-lifetime experience. The exchange program allowed me to, and everyone on our team, to experience a very different culture, one that is very different from our culture in America. Yet, there are many similarities, but also a few differences. Because of this trip, I now have friends in Japan that are across the world. My buddy Mashi is one of these friends. Her family was so kind and generous, and they opened up their home to me. These friendships that I've made have made me utterly thankful to the Sister City program for giving me the chance to have worldwide friendships. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Riley Bogard. Riley, if you can come up. Riley distinguished herself by being interviewed at the Okazaki City Hall on video. Riley, what would you like to share?
Hello, everyone. I am Riley Bogard, and I am in ninth, in ninth grade at Newport Harbor High School. I just would like to say thank you for playing a part in giving me this opportunity of a lifetime, visiting Japan. I loved Okazaki so much that I have decided to return next summer. summer. I don't know how I could thank you enough for allowing me to expand my knowledge on a different culture. I have taken this opportunity and used it to enhance my awareness of the way we all live. How grateful I am to live in such an amazing city surrounded by amazing people. Thank you again for this amazing experience.
Next, Mr. Cade Carson would like to come up.
Hi, my name is Cade Carson. I'm in ninth grade at Corona Del Mar High School. Going to Japan was an amazing experience. There's nothing like they could ever compare to it. It was a great experience that I'll never forget. I got to meet my buddy and go to his school, which was much different than school in America. There was, especially their lunch, which was, like, they had all the lunches in their rooms, and they didn't care at all because, like, they don't get rats and stuff, which is good.
And they helped make the lunches?
Yeah, they make the lunches all themselves. They go into the cafeteria and then grab the food and bring it in their own room, which is really strange, but thank you.
Thank you, Cade.
That's his last thing.
Next, Ms. Leanna Tamura. Leanna speaks Japanese, and she was the team translator.
Oh. Hi, my name is Leanna Tamura. I'm a ninth grader at Newport Harbor High School. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to visit Japan. It was a really, it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and I learned a lot about the culture. Thank you.
Mr. Mason Applebaum, if you'll come up. Mason, one of his tasks was to carry and present gifts to various city leaders that they met.
Hello, my name is Mason Applebaum, and I go to Jay Sarah Catholic High School. I'm in ninth grade. And I was a part of the Okazaki Exchange. This was an experience of a lifetime. From this exchange, I got to meet a new friend I will have for, for life. And, and he's from a different country too, so I will definitely go back and visit. It was an experience of a lifetime. Thank you.
And finally, we have Ms. Millie Clark. Millie, if you can come on up. Millie carried a gift from the city of Newport Beach. I believe you gave a flag to the city of Okazaki. She carried that to them. She now has a gift to give to you, but first she's going to say a little bit about her experience.
Hello, my name is Millie Clark, and I attend Corona Del Mar High School in the ninth grade. I was overcome with graciousness of the Japanese people at school and at home. I bring, I brought home with me friendships that will last a lifetime, some that I'm now in contact with today. I would like to present a gift to Diane Dixon from Okazaki City. Would you like to come receive it?
Sure.
Explain what it is. Well, as soon as she opens it, okay.
Well, thank you. Am I open it?
Please.
Can I break it?
That's the base. So this white granite is from Okazaki within the city limits. It's carved there, and this is what the city of Okazaki, the mayor of Okazaki, has chosen to give as a gift this year.
There's an explanation in the bag, too.
Oh, in the bag, too?
This is traditional crafts in Okazaki. This is made from by hand. Owl called Bring Happiness Bird, and has three meanings. Our happy lock, so it augurs well for me. We don't struggle and will be happy. Owl's neck turns well, so we'll get on in business. I love it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I'm just a parent. I'm very enthusiastic about this program. I volunteered a little bit. I've given a little bit of money. I'm helping them make this presentation. We are happy to come back to make a budget proposal. You already fund us a little bit, but it, but it is, more, or more. It's a, it's the sort of joint work that involves two cities, two Sister City Associations, parents on, in both continents, and host families, and Rotary Clubs on both ends as well. Scoot in.
One, two, three. One more. One, two.
Who, me? Oh, no, I'm just a dad. No, please. Okay, alright, fine. Thank you very much. And they're gonna go home and finish their homework.
I just want to say, as, as our guests are leaving, I have been a supporter personally of the Sister Cities Association for a number of years. I've been to Antibes. I missed your event this year. I was, think I was in Washington or something just recently. But thank you, committee, for all you do, and it's just wonderful to make us so proud of, of our Sister Cities. Yeah, yes. When is that, this year?
2020.
2020, alright. Might, might be a mayor's trip some there. Thank you all, I appreciate it. Okay, any more public comments on non-agenda items? Here comes one. Mr. Ray.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, and staff. I'm Steve Ray, the Executive Director of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. First of all, it's hard to follow them, so I will try to trudge on here if I can. First of all, I would like to announce to the council and to the public at large that in our learned opinion with the Banning Ranch Conservancy, the days of any major development of Banning Ranch are over. We have moved kind of beyond that, all parties have, and we are looking forward to the future of Banning Ranch, and we will be sharing that with you in the future. The Banning Ranch Conservancy has spent 20 years working to preserve Banning Ranch and to save it from development. And during that time, we have worked out of our homes, our garages, our cars. We've had meetings in churches and Wahoo's Fish Tacos and all kinds of places. We have always been headquartered here in Newport Beach, but we never had an official home. Well, I would like to announce that just less than a couple of weeks ago, we actually opened offices here in Newport Beach. Steve Rosanci, the former mayor and president of the Chamber of Commerce, came and brought his big scissors to do the official ribbon cutting and everything. We had a really good time, and we want to acknowledge that Mayor Dixon came, and we were very, very honored to have you come, Madam Mayor, and seriously appreciated you, you being there and had the chance to, to discuss some items relative to banning. So, so that is one bit of good news for us. We now have a home, and we're, we're working seriously. And what we're working seriously toward is the next part of our mission statement. Our mission statement is to, to preserve, acquire, conserve, and manage the entire Banning Ranch as Permanent Public Open Space Park and Coastal Nature Preserve. Well, we are working on that. We've spent first 20 years on the to-preserve part. We're now moving to acquire the property. And as everybody told us it was impossible to stop development on a Banning Ranch, we're now hearing it's impossible for us to raise the money to, to buy Banning Ranch. I can assure you, we're working very seriously toward that, and I have every confidence that we're going to be able to achieve that as well. Toward that end, we are celebrating our 20th anniversary. We're having a gala. I don't know if you've all heard about it yet or not, but we're having a gala on Saturday, November 2nd. And we have, we have invitations here for all of you to come. We'd love to have the, the council there and hear about what we've not only done, but what we're aiming to do in the future. With that, I would also like to extend to you an offer to come and present to you what our vision for the future of Banning Ranch will be. And like to do that maybe at a study session or some sort of public session where you can hear it, and the, the public at large can see what we're doing as well. So with that, really appreciate your attention. We look forward to a lot of great years with Banning Ranch. It's gonna be a great asset to not only the city, but to the citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other public speakers? Please come forward.
So shout out to Mr. Ray. That's, to me, he epitomizes what one person can do if they're committed to something, and they, they really possess tenacity. Anyway, so, that's not what I was gonna tell. So I'm here tonight because the last city council meeting I attended, I was so appalled at the behavior that went on outside the city council chambers where I was actually pushed by a resident from Newport Coast who didn't like me, and some of, my sign, and some other action that went on, including from Mr. Hurdman, and some other things that went on here. I was kind of shocked. So I actually invited a Costa Mesa City Council person who is in attendance tonight. And of course, it's all calm tonight, but I actually wanted them to see what was going on over here and the reaction of the Newport residents about having a homeless shelter. So, I am up here again tonight. I've gone to the Huntington Beach City Councils. I'm up here again tonight. I feel this is a regional issue. If you listen to the experts, Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa, and Newport Beach should be working together on two issues: the sober living problem and the homeless shelter. It's ridiculous that everybody has not worked together, that these three towns have not worked together on these two issues. Mr. Congressman Ruda was right over there a couple of weeks ago at the Speak Up Newport meeting, and he said that the opioid epidemic, the presence of all these sober living homes is almost, I think he said 70% of why we have such a huge homeless problem in Orange County. We are importing heroin addicts to the, to our cities. I, the first time I ever spoke here, and I'm not a public speaker, I came over here and I said, "We've got trouble in River City, and it doesn't start with P and stand for pool. It starts with H and stands for heroin. We're in the middle of a heroin epidemic." That was five or six years ago. And, and some of you weren't here, and most everyone here looked at me like I was from outer space. I didn't even want to talk about this with all the young students here. But now that they're gone, I want to talk about it. The night that I came that time, there'd been a heroin overdose at Corona Del Mar High School. A kid out of rehab had overdosed in the bathroom at Ralph's on 17th Street. You have, you have to cut off the source of what is going on around here that is causing so much of our homelessness. You have to stop the sober living and the heroin that's pouring into our cities. You don't have to listen to me. Talk to the DEA. Talk to the Police Department. And by the way, last night at a debate, a person running for state assembly named Mr. Min said that, that the, the police departments in Orange County are trained to shoot first and talk later. I'm sorry, but Katrina Foley spoke up, and I am telling you that I have seen the police departments in Huntington Beach, Newport, and Costa Mesa, that I've actually watched the way they treat the, the presence of addicts and homeless in our cities. They should be getting awards all over the place. They are not trained to shoot first and ask questions later. They are almost like social workers. You have to watch the way they treat the people in our cities, and I think they should be getting a blue ribbon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, any other public speakers? Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sean Archbold. I'm from a class from UCI. Many of us older students are here today to come and watch you do your work. So really excited to see some of it. And I think a homeless shelter would be pretty cool here. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counsel. My name is Max Johnson, resident here 20, 25 years now, actually. It was my birthday last week, so I'm automatically saying 24, but now 25. Quarter Century Club now, member here. So I just wanted to mention, you know, last council meeting, when the topic of homelessness was discussed, you know, there were certain comments from council in regard to other agenda items that were brought up, and particularly the Arts Commission as well as other items. And so some of the comments were, you know, in the city, we want residents to know that we're taking homelessness seriously or as a priority. And what I wanted to speak about is the, you know, the benefit that the Arts Commission, the programs that it does and what it's trying to do, the benefits of it are. And I think that it's, just because if, if we're looking at funding something through the Arts Commission, doesn't mean that that says to residents that homelessness doesn't matter. So what I'm trying to make a point here of is, I, I think the, the great positive benefits of what Arlene Greer is doing, and I think that, you know, she was just reinstated under special, excuse me, special circumstances, and she's doing an incredible job. And I just, in terms of reflecting on last council, I don't think that she received the support for doing the job that she was brought back to do. And she's done such an incredible job here with the city. I just don't think she's getting enough credit. And, and in all of this, I think homelessness is our, is a priority of ours. But I think that that doesn't mean that we have to shelve things for the Arts Commission or take out everything in grants that she's trying to approve. So I think that maybe it's working with Arlene and seeing how the city can, can help in, in other ways. But the, the comments that were said in voting against certain measures were saying, oh, well, you know, voting for this says to residents homelessness isn't important. And I don't think that's true. I think that we can still prioritize homelessness and yet still fund amazing programs within the city, that I had the benefit of having as well as my siblings and friends growing up. So I think the arts is a very important aspect of our city and our community, and we are an amazing town worldwide. But if, if you had grown up here and went through some of these programs, you know, I, I think that, I just wanted to see it turn into, you know, nothing. Obviously, it won't be nothing, but, but all of the great programs and, and, you know, funding that Arlene's trying to get to improve things. I, I just think that we can still prioritize homelessness and other topics while also maintaining other programs here in the city. So that, that's my point on that. So I hope you can take that with a grain of salt and, you know, maybe, you know, try to figure out ways that Arlene can receive more funding for things. But I'm in full support of the Arts Commission and Arlene, and I just want to congratulate her on an amazing job. So we brought her back here to do a great job, and I think she's doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. You've got a fan club there. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward. Seeing none. Alright, we'll get into public hearing. Annual Review of Zoning Implementation for Sober Living by the Sea. Do we need a staff report on this? This is an annual review. I think we'll go right to no comments here. A public comment on this item, please. On the renewal of Sober Living by the Sea.
Oh, maybe you haven't read the newspaper, but now it's gonna be called Sierra by the Sea because sober living is getting such a bad name around here and nationwide. And I don't know if you ever go on the website, but why don't you go home tonight and jump on Sober Living by the Sea. Instead of, you know, sex cells, it's surf cells. They're importing addicts from all over the country to the peninsula. And why don't you ta, I don't know where the neighbors are. It's not okay. So what they're doing, the reason they're changing the name is because they are acting like it's not a sober living. It's now like a mental health wellness situation. And I want you to be aware of this. This is going on nationwide. The New Yorker Magazine just had a great article, Florida, what's it called? Florida Shuffle, October 21st, this year. Just go home and look that up. That's what's going on here. There are people that are thrown out of Sober Living by the Sea that end up as homeless people and on the peninsula because that's where they've been living, and that's the grounds they know. And they're very familiar. They know exactly where to go. I really think this should be readdressed. I don't think they are good actors. They've- They've caused a lot of trouble in the city. I, stop being intimidated, you know, by litigation. They are not good actors. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you want to just respond to that? Because I know we do a thorough inspection and audit of this particular facility.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. Every year, we do a thorough review with Code Enforcement, PD, and we actually go out to the site. And so Sierra, Sober Living by the Sea actually has a zoning implementation agreement, and they're in full compliance of the agreement.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Sure? Somebody, come forward.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and City Council members. I'm Valerie Kading. I am an adult psychiatric nurse practitioner and also the new CEO of Sierra by the Sea. I am extremely honored and proud to be the CEO of Sierra by the Sea. And yes, we did undergo a name change, and that is because Sober Living by the Sea was a wrong business name for what we actually do. We are not sober living homes. What we provide is residential treatment for those suffering from substance use disorder. Our country is in the midst of an opioid epidemic and a substance use issue that has affected many lives. And as you know, hundreds and thousands of individuals have died from opioid overdose, and many loved ones and families have been affected. We are here to provide evidence-based treatment and care and medical treatment for these individuals suffering from this disease. So I'd like to say that we have been good neighbors. We have not done anything to negatively impact this community, and we care deeply about this neighborhood, this community, and those that we help. We are part of the Sierra Tucson Group under the Acadia Corporation. We are, the Sierra Tucson Organization is the flagship and one of the leading healthcare facilities in this country. So I would like to ask you to learn more about what we do. I am happy to speak with any of you and answer any questions that you may have about what we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Mayor Dixon, council members. I have a quick question.
Could you just state your name?
Oh, my name is Carol Drew. I'm a 38-year resident of Newport Beach. And we've had a problem with these sober living homes. When the people run out of money, they are often put out on the street. And I think that when they're from other states and other cities, the sober living homes should be required to transport these people back to their original destination so they are not on our streets. And I understand they'd rather stay here where the weather's nicer than to go back where there might be snow or hostile family members. But I think it would behoove us all to require these sober living homes to send these people back to where they came from so that they can have the support of their families. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
That's not a non-agenda item. Mayor Dixon, my name is Jim Mosher, and I had a comment on the annual review of the Sober Living by the Sea. You're being asked to receive-
Did I say non-agenda items? Pardon me. Excuse me.
Yes. You are being asked to receive and file the documents. And as I pointed out to Melinda before you receive and file them, there seems to be an error in the city's own inspection report, the cover letter to that, which is on page 56 of the packet, 1456. It inadvertently says that the bed count this year is 64 beds on the peninsula and six off the peninsula for a total of 70 beds, which doesn't add up with anything else in the report. And it doesn't add up with the detailed explanation of how many beds there are in each room, which fits the table that's at the end. So before receiving and filing it, you might want to correct the cover letter. The correct count is apparently 31 beds on the peninsula and 12 off the peninsula near the hospital. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, come back up here. Any comments from the dais? Any questions of staff? Is there a motion? Oh, you have a, I apologize.
No, the computer went off.
Oh, all right. Go ahead.
My question is, first of all, do we need to correct those numbers as Jim stated?
Yes, it's a received and filed item, so it was a memo from Code Enforcement, so we do have to make those corrections as noted.
Okay. And my other question, perhaps for the CEO, is how do you respond to the accusation that patients are just being put out onto the street after they finish their treatment?
So we have a process where we communicate with the family members, the referents, and we never leave anybody out on the street. So we have very strong relationships with other treatment facilities and/or other healthcare providers, and we make sure that we know where they're going upon discharge.
Are they returned home? Or do they originate from?
So it depends on, the next step could be a lower level of care. Sometimes it is back home, and sometimes they choose to seek treatment locally or somewhere else besides home. Because sometimes going back to their hometown is not a healthy place to go. Those are oftentimes places where the relapse rate is higher because of their connections to their source of substances.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have a motion by Ms., who? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
By Mr. Malden and seconded by Mr. Hurdman. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Mayor?
Yes?
This next item, I have a conflict due to wireless telecommunications infrastructure. Consider it to be installed in the building or adjacent to the building.
Okay. We'll miss you.
Excuse me?
All right. Item number 15, Fire Station Number Two Replacement Project, conceptual design. Mr. Webb.
Yes, again, good evening, Mayor, council members. Excited to bring this project to you again tonight. We haven't probably talked about this project since September of 2017 when we talked about purchasing the property for the new fire station. So tonight I have with me Deputy Director City Engineer Jim Houlihan and also Peter Tetcher, one of our senior and junior project managers. They're going to give you a short presentation on this.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
This one, okay, there we go. We're sharing here. So tonight, staff is going through the process, we'll go through the process, a little short process of how we got to the recommendations. And the recommendations we're looking at tonight are for finding the project exempt from CEQA, review and approve the conceptual design and project budget, and direct staff to proceed with the final fire station and replacement construction documents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Peter, and he'll run through the process of how we arrived at the staff recommendations.
Mayor Dixon, council members. My name is Peter Towser. Please let me introduce you to the Fire Station Number Two Review Approval of Concept Design. In 1952, this existing station was constructed in 1952. It's a bit dated. It's been, often needs repairs, and it's not up to date with the current use of the fire stations that we expect in the city. In February 2018, the city purchased a piece of property at 2807 Newport Boulevard for a new fire station, a 17,000 square foot piece of property, and the building was demolished in April of 2018. On September 10th, at a community meeting, three options were presented to, at a town hall meeting. Option one was a Lido option. It is similar to, I'm not going to say similar to, but where the old city hall was, it kind of mirrors, it has a lighthouse and a simple roof. Option two was a contemporary, urban contemporary with a flat roof and basic, more basic lines than the other, than the other option one. Option three was a more modern-looking building, red building with a red roof and a different color scheme. At this meeting, I was selected to select option one, the Lido option, but there was also suggesting that we look at a brick option. This option was brought back on a June 3rd town hall meeting, and all four options were discussed at that town hall meeting. And out of all the options, again, the Lido option was selected. Here's a view of the Lido option from across the street on 28th Street. Shows the three doors and the lighthouse feature that is a prominent architectural feature out there. This is from across the street, corner view, showing the lighthouse feature and the side view going down Newport Boulevard. And this is the other view showing the view going down the other side of Newport Boulevard and the three garage apparatus bay. The site floor layout plan, basically, this shows, this shows the site, what's in discussions with the fire department, and they have a committee there for selecting how they wanted the needs and for their fire station. We came up with an 11,000 square foot building, the three garage apparatus bay, three door, three garage door apparatus bay, 30-room person locker turnout, and onsite parking for all the people, all the firefighters working at the facility. The first floor plan shows office space for the captains, has an exercise room, kitchen layout, and also has a day room for the fire department when they're not out. The second floor layout shows the, this is the second floor. This shows the dorm rooms, shows 12 dorm rooms, four bathrooms, and there's a fifth bathroom there that the captains share. Also shows a study room, and it has two stairways to access the second floor. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Jim to talk about the street improvements.
So adjacent to the fire station, the staff proposes to reconfigure the parking along 28th Street. And with that, we're placing 15 angled parking stalls where eight parallel stalls exist today. There are three stalls, parallel stalls in front of the fire station location, which will be removed. So with that, we have a net plus four stalls in that location. In addition, we'll be improving the landscaping and the sidewalk, and we're preparing, we're providing some bulbouts for the crosswalk areas as well. So at Newport Boulevard southbound and 28th, we'll be adding a new signal there, and that will be tied to the city's traffic management center. And when there's a call for fire response, the proposed signal and the existing signal over at northbound Newport and 28th will be controlled by the fire station to allow them to exit. The parking improvements, landscaping, and crosswalk improvements are part of a separate CIP with separate funding. These improvements, along with the traffic signal, are proposed to go in prior to the fire station. Here's the proposed estimate. You can see the new traffic signal was an added item here for that intersection to provide the efficiency of the operation. The total of 9.6 million is just under the budget that was set for the, in the FFP for programming for this project. That was at 9.9 million. The property was purchased, as Peter had mentioned, back in 2018 for approximately $4 million. And in 2017, the appraisal, residual appraised land value of the existing station is approximately 2.3. So at this time, it's, we'll do a new appraisal at the time and for that land when we transfer the fire station. Here's the tentative schedule with design being complete early summer next year, construction beginning, the beginning of 2021, and it's about a 17-month construction window. And with that, again, the staff recommendations to find the project exempt with CEQA, review and approve the conceptual design and project budget, and direct staff to proceed with the final fire station replacement construction documents. Brad Summers is here as well. He's the president, sorry, the principal engineer with Traffic Operations to answer any questions regarding the offsites and folks with the fire department to answer any questions on the operations of the fire station.
And if I could inject one item that did get overlooked, if you could go back, Peter, to the site plan. During the community meetings, another element came out that the residents of these areas wanted a public restroom in this area because the nearest public restrooms are at 38th Street Park and also at the pier. So at the top corner on the left-hand side, you'll see a small outbuilding, which is two single occupancy public restrooms that will be lockable at night, but does provide a public convenience for this area and the beachgoers in this area. So that would also be included in the project and was included in the cost you saw. I think with that, we're open for any questions.
All right. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, so real quick, on the expenses side, I went back and looked at our, the council packet on this particular item when we approved it back in, this was September 12th, 2017. So a couple of things. One, you're right, it's fairly close, given that it's two years later, it's actually pretty good. It's fairly close on the total, although I'll note that the total took into account the idea that we would be selling the existing site. And so in order to make this penciled out, that was something that we need to, we had planned for as a council. So when we get to that point, it's worth the council remembering that that's how we penciled this out. And the other thing worth mentioning, given what one of the previous speakers was discussing, the reason we were able to afford this site in the first place was because we had taken $900,000, I'm sorry, $800,000 from something that used to be called the Cultural Arts and Facilities Fund. And when we deleted the council policy and moved that money over, that's how we were able to afford this. So when we're talking about money, it's important to recognize that it's not unlimited. And when we have a discussion about general fund, literally, it can be used for anything. So when we're talking about grant funding, when we're talking about arts funding, when we're talking about police funding, we're talking about things that you have to make decisions on, and it's hard up here, admittedly. It is difficult. But when you make the decisions two years ago on this exact item, and you're seeing the fruition coming forward now, that's why it's important when we're talking about issues that we have those two, three-year, sometimes 10-year time horizons on how we spend money, and we're focusing in on every dollar you spend in one area is a dollar you can't spend in another area. And I'll tell you, I'm really excited for the groundbreaking on this item. It's important. And so when we're making those decisions, this is why, and it's important that you're paying attention to why that is. So I wanted to point that out, given what someone had said earlier.
Mr. Hurdman.
Just a quick question about the design option. There's four of them in here, I believe.
There are.
Have we made a decision on that? Which one?
That's what we're recommending right now.
Tonight, we're doing that. Okay.
There is a preferred option.
There's just a lot more information on option one, a lot more pictures about the Lido option than there are any others. So I was, I can't remember whether or not we actually approved an elevation.
The council has not approved an elevation yet. What we did go to the community, had two town hall meetings on the peninsula, and both times, they preferred option one. So tonight, staff is recommending that that is the option, that focuses of your decision.
Ms. Brenner, or Mr. Avery, excuse me.
I like the idea of a brick firehouse.
With a dalmatian?
Yeah, it's just traditional, you know, and a little different than copying the Lido House Hotel, which is beautiful. But it doesn't matter to me, really, frankly, because what I'm really excited about is this new frickin' fire station on the peninsula in the right place. And the fire department team got what they wanted here. They know what they need, and they got the support of council, and everybody pulled together on this. And the idea of going through, like we've been doing systematically, upgrading every fire station in this city is so important now, I believe, because it's setting us up for years ahead, no matter what happens. There's going to be a time we're going to have a downturn in economy, and we won't be able to do something like this. And these kinds of structures, the infrastructure, all the infrastructure stuff we do in the city, I'm a total fan of because it's the ground level of what we need to do for the residents of this town, from the sewers to the fire stations to the lighting, all of it. It's just, it's critical. And- And do it while we can, that's my deal. Thank you very much, I'm really happy about this.
Good comments, Ms. Brenner.
I would just like to say what progress this is, that you had two Town Hall meetings on this design and that you actually asked the community what they wanted and had them vote on it. Because when we had ours designed, we had to throw our own meeting, this Corona Del Mar Residents Association Annual Meeting, and we printed up our own ballots in order to get people to vote on the design that they liked for the building. So we've come a long way. And I think that's really commendable, the way you've done it.
I'm good, thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say that I feel this project and where it's located will definitely have a type of a calming effect because that's a late-night area, as we all know. And one element that I hope comes from it is that it helps the residents around there and those who are partying late at night understand that there's a consequence to their actions. And so I think that's a, it has a side benefit.
Well, I think you're absolutely right. Actually, that's been a fundamental part of the justification for this location because of the mass migration that occurs between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. down Newport Boulevard and Balboa Boulevard, a mass of humanity looking for something to eat and then to use the public facilities. And that's why the public facility is better than the sidewalk. And I commend staff for putting together an excellent design and engaging with the residents of the peninsula on this and moving this forward. So I'm very appreciative. Any more comments up here, we'll go out to the public. Please come forward with any public comments.
Hello, I'm Audine Eyre. I'm also a student at UCI. And excuse my lack of awareness on the topic, but I realize not many of the environmental concerns about the different options were, say, considered. So maybe if there was an option that, say, was financially more expensive but environmentally cheaper, that should also be taken into consideration as environmental costs can't be paid back just as easily as, say, tax dollars can. Thank you.
Very good comment, thank you. Any other, next comment, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher, and I have five comments about this. First one, for the council members who are not there, I think they should, if they prefer some other design than the Lido design, they should understand that the public outreach was not as rigorous as it may have sounded like. The town halls that are being referred to were the mayor's town halls, which had many agenda topics on them. And people coming to the meeting only saw that there was something, there was going to be an update about the fire station. There was not an announcement, this is your opportunity to come and vote on a design. It just came up during the meeting. And there was a show of hands. The people who were there were probably not there for the fire station. They were probably there to complain about the electric bikes on the boardwalk or something of that sort, or one of the other topics. So I think the design is still an open question if the council had a different view of it from what those few people who were at the Town Hall voted for. At those meetings, the vote was strongly for that one design, but that was not the purpose of the meeting. Second comment I would want to make is why the city is not proceeding with changing the land use designation of this parcel from visitor-serving commercial, which it currently is, to a public facility. When it was McDonald's, it clearly was a community, visitor-serving community, visitor-serving commercial property. As a fire station, it's clearly not that, it's not commercial. It seems like we should be honest about this and change the designation for the property. Related to that, I'm wondering, is there going to be a coastal development permit for the actual building of the new building, as there was for the demolition of the old building? I assume there will be at some time, I'm not sure when that's going to happen. Fourth comment is, we're referring to this as the Lido Fire Station. Since it's no longer quite in Lido, is that still going to be what it's called? Or is staff going to have some new name for this? It's going to be the Upper Peninsula Fire Station? Or what is it going to be called? And finally, I noticed in the design, again, there's no fire pole for the firemen to slide down to get to the entrance in a hurry. And I'm wondering from the Fire Department, would something like a slide or something like that speed up the response time? Thank you. Going downstairs seems kind of laborious, thank you.
Thank you, any other public comments? Next public comment, please.
I'll make this short. My name's Ken Rossen. I was at the Town Hall meeting and the outreaches. I have a very different view and memory of what happened. The Fire Department got up and made a very nice detailed presentation to us because we on the peninsula were very concerned about how the fire trucks were going to exit, the alarms, how they'd go off. They explained to us what they do in Corona Del Mar. And they put, in my opinion, all my neighbors at rest. The idea that they would enter onto the street without the alarms going at certain times of the day. We're very concerned they were putting these, this fire station, moving it from where it is now to where it was going to go, which would be in a residential area. Only because of these Town Hall meetings did that really quell the fears from the residents in that area. And I still think there's going to be, you know, they promised they'd be good neighbors, the Fire Department did. I still think the proof is going to be in the execution when it comes, but we'll wait and see. My memory was, we saw lots of different options. The Town Hall meetings that we have at Marina Park that Mayor Dixon, Councilwoman Dixon held at that time, very well attended. She gives us, she gives us an agenda that's going to be, what's going to be talked about. And sure, one of our large items that we talk about frequently are the traffic on the boardwalk, electric bicycles, et cetera, et cetera. But also, she has the city staff come in and explain to us all the building that's going on on the peninsula. And this time, we knew the fire station was going to be talked about. So got a very good turnout of people voting, made it very clear which one the residents on the peninsula wanted to see. So I'm very thankful for the meetings that you held. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Sorry, you want to make a comment, no? No. Were you going to speak?
I will.
If you don't want to, that's okay.
My name's Mitch Mathis, and I'm a resident of Newport Beach for the last five years. I live about 100 feet from the proposed fire station. Just sitting out on my balcony, right there on 28th and Newport, I think one of the best things you're doing is putting up a light there. Extremely dangerous. I noticed that you put some little left and right in the intersections, which I don't, I think pedestrians do that. I think it's the cars that are looking for parking spaces and looking at the girls and doing that stuff. And not really paying attention to what they're doing is a real problem. But my opinion is a horrible spot for a fire station. Not that it's going to really matter at this point of the game. And I'm a very small fish in a very large pond. But the traffic out there is horrendous. The routing of the fire trucks, I think I've seen the routing, how they're going to get away and how they're going to get to where they're supposed to be going. But I think it's going to add a lot of response time to the majority of the calls that they make. And yeah, that's, that's the selfish part of me, I guess, that because that's kind of low on my list. The one that I'm most concerned with is the property value or the perceived property value of my house that I bought there. I could probably ask any of you if you would be, if you had an opportunity to buy, you know, my little house somewhere else, would you buy that house in front of a fire station? Or would you buy that house away from a fire station? And I don't know, I just think I'm, that whole property over there has been a nightmare since I moved. And from the McDonald's closing and then all the vagrants there, and then the construction, and then now the construction yard that's there that makes noise constantly. I don't even know what they're doing, but they load up every morning at 6 o'clock and off they go. Anyway, I'm really disappointed at that whole area right there. Also, the parking spots that you're going to do, is that going to be a paid, is that going to be paid parking? Is that going to be metered parking? Or is that going to be free parking? I mean, I pay enormous, I mean, in my view, enormous property tax. Not like a lot of you do. I mean, like, again, small fish, right? But man, I pay the property tax and I still have to pay $500 for a master parking permit just to find parking down there. And I'm not a public speaker, so I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. So anyway, the selfish part of me is the property value itself. And then when I hear this proposed public restroom? My goodness, you must not like me at all. I don't know where that's coming from. I know most of my residents over there, at least on 28th Street, I don't know one of them that's in favor of a public restroom right there. I mean, let's invite all of the, I don't know. I bought there, right? So that's my fault. But I don't think that public restroom is a great, I mean, I don't want it there. I got enough nonsense going on without that, so anyway. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Two things, staff, to respond as the chief here, just to talk about the response time real quick. Just, I think it's a good update. We spoke about this two years ago. But just to remind the community about this response times.
Good evening. We did speak about this a couple of years ago when Fire Chief Chip Duncan did an updated study from our standards of coverage. And what they found was that although the response times will increase to some parts of Lido Island and some of the other areas up by the Hoag Hospital area, they'll decrease in other parts of the peninsula. So it's a little bit of a give and take, or a push-pull, if you will. But the response times for the four blocks that we're considering or that we're going to be moving towards is really minimal in the respect of what we're shooting for overall. We're shooting for about a four to six-minute response time overall. And we didn't see it moving the four blocks south. We didn't see that increasing past that response time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, just, and we're clearly under world standards. Anyway, we beat world standards, don't we? Our national standards.
Our response times are exceptional around the county and the state. And if you were, and I, just to give you an example, I received a Google Maps example. And sometimes if you just go to Google Maps, just for public record, it'll take into account traffic patterns where it can get delayed and clogged up. And it doesn't necessarily, our GIS system, our mappers here with the city tie it into our dispatching system. And we have the ability to use these preemptive lights that Public Works is putting in and the ability to get around traffic a little bit better. So it doesn't always correlate to Google Maps. So there could be some misleading statistics if you just look at Google Maps and say, well, my house is going to increase significantly. We just, we don't project the response times significantly increasing. To the tip of Lido Island was our biggest concern, to the very tip. That increased at one time, we think, about 43 seconds.
Okay, let me ask Mayor Potem, you had a question or a comment? Oh, but I didn't know if you were wanting to do it now, you're waiting?
I'm waiting.
Okay. Also, just maybe Public Works can address this question that the gentleman just raised about property values. We've just gone through Ms. Brenner's district, and maybe you want to comment on that? All right, but we, the neighbors in Corona Del Mar, I don't want to speak for them in terms of their support for the fire station that's been located within the neighborhood center there. So Mr. Webb, would you want to comment on that?
I don't know exactly property values. I know it's not undesirable. The station over in Corona Del Mar has housing all around it. And it's well-liked housing, as I understand it. We have other stations in residential neighborhoods. There is housing across the street. I put this slide back up there for you. And I think the gentleman who had spoke probably lives across this street. To one point, he did make it, will be free parking in front. It's residential, you see the new parking in front of his houses. And in following the theme, what we've done on Balboa Boulevard to add beautification and trees, et cetera, the frontage of their houses, the parkways are going to be improved, new trees, new plants, along with some of the bulbout meetings you see here are in addition to, to kind of help soften the area there and help with those house frontages.
Very good. Okay, Ms. Brenner.
I just had a question for Jeff. It seems to me that our Corona Del Mar fire station, they don't turn their sirens on and as, any more than they absolutely have to when they're on those small residential streets. Is there some policy that I don't know about? Because they're very courteous. And even when they're going up Marguerite, they often will keep their siren levels lower than it seems like when they're on PCH.
Right, so that's a good question. And that's another one that's come up over the last couple of years. And my operations chief and one of my battalion chiefs is standing back there. And they're in charge of the crews and the captains that make those determinations of when they're going to use the horn and the sirens. And I'm just thinking off the top of my head, between Balboa Peninsula, Corona Del Mar, Mariners, and Balboa Island specifically, we exit right into residential housing. And we're literally neighbors next to other residential houses. We aren't in commercial areas, if you will. So our firefighters have learned to be quiet and good neighbors. And many instances, what we can do, what we could do is turn on the flashing, what we call an OptiCom light, and it trips the signals that we have in place. So it'll turn the signal green. And then we can move with the flow of traffic without necessarily having to do lights and sirens. So the lights and sirens really come into play in some intersections. And right now, where we are at 32nd Street, that's a really difficult intersection to navigate because of the way it was actually reconfigured. So that's actually a pretty dangerous intersection for us now. I'm looking forward to the 28th Street where they can come out and the lights will be green. It should be an easier entrance and exit.
And the other comment I wanted to make was about the property values. I hope that you find that you're wrong because I look at our fire station and library in Corona Del Mar, and I wish I lived across the street from it. I love it so much. I think it really has enhanced the neighborhood. It really makes it so attractive. So hopefully, this building will be also very attractive. And it will make you feel like it's an enhancement to your neighborhood.
Did you want to speak now or afterwards? Mr. Herman, did you want to speak now?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. I'd like to address a couple of your concerns. There's been a fire station on Balboa Island for 20 years. I have a home that is less than 500 feet away from it. And the protocol that our chief just described in terms of the flashing light, the non-use of a siren, has been practiced for 20 years. That fire station has never once disrupted my life or had any kind of a negative impact on the quality of my life on Balboa Island. So I just want to assure you of that. If a protocol is established, it has to be followed. There will be no exceptions to it. As far as property value is concerned, it continues to go up, 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 and up on Balboa Island. The fire station has absolutely zero effect on property value. Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? See none, bring that back up here, Mayor Potem.
Two other things. Everyone always forgets there's a fire station Newport Coast, but that one also is near. Yeah, I know.
I did forget about that one.
Yeah, thanks, yeah. So just.
Where'd you say that was?
I know, it's this faraway land of Newport Coast. So this district, or Station 8, that's next to residences as well. And they've had, yeah, they've had actually really good relationships. So look, I'm going to defer to the mayor to make the motion. But I just want to point out, I'm really excited about this one. And I remember, I remember, you know, I got to know Joy through making sure we save the funding for the CDM station. And we really had to fight to find the funding for this one. And, you know, I mentioned one of the sources. Another source was $900,000 from the Building Excise Tax Fund. Another source was $2.3 million from the Facilities Financial Planning Fund. I mean, we.
How about it together?
Yeah, we worked to get this one done. And we got it done. And seeing the progress we're making here, it really is exciting. So I'd just like to make the second after the motion is made.
Well, thank you for that distinct honor to move this forward. I make a motion. Thank you all for your continued support and constructive involvement. So I move the approval of the conceptual design of a fire station number two, Lido Station, if it's still called Lido Station, but to move that forward. Any other comments? Let's vote.
I'll second. I'll second.
The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
By the way, can I just point out, I would love to see a slide in a fire station if for no other reason than to watch our police department just mock the fire department relentlessly. So if we can put a slide in there for that, for that sole reason, I'd be, I'd appreciate it. But thanks for the idea, Jim.
All right. The last item this evening is the resolution on the sculpture exhibition in the Civic Center Park and the local assistance specified grant. Do we need a staff report on this, folks? We heard this last meeting. I know Mr. Heather Intenz is here, thank you, just in case. Any comments? Seeing none. Any public comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon, members of the city council. Tonight, whether the council adopts option A or B, the city, the city arts commission and the people of Newport Beach have realized a significant goal. We've been recognized for the outstanding work our community has put forth to create our museum without walls. Special thanks goes to the original city council who had a vision to incorporate it into the Sculpture Garden in the center, and we must thank recent city councils, including you, for your ongoing commitment to the project when it was in its infancy. We would like to thank the community for their dedication to bringing art and your bringing art into our community. Thank you. We wish to recognize Mayor Diane Dixon, Councilman Jeff Herdman, Councilwoman Joy Brenner, and city council members for your unwavering support for the arts over these past years. Without their support, there will be no sculpture, without your support, there will be no Sculpture Garden, no Art in the Park, and no concert series on the civic green. I also wish to recognize all members of the Arts Commission, both past and present, for their hard work and the staff, and their enthusiasm and belief in the positive impact public art has for our city, on and for our city, that is. Without their dedication and commitment, none of this would be possible. Thank you, staff, and thank you, prior Arts Commission. With the proposed acceptance of this grant, we will have secured the guaranteed funding for a minimum of two additional phases of the sculpture exhibition. With the allocation of a portion of this funding, we are also able to effectuate repairs, rehabilitation, and renewal of the grounds of the Sculpture Garden and Civic Center, thus saving the city around $200,000 that would otherwise have to be spent from the general fund. So again, we ask your support for this eve, this evening, for option A or B. It doesn't matter. We will still have a Sculpture Garden. We will still have funding. And the wonderful part of all of this, we're accumulating $200,000. And just thinking about the money that went to the fire station, we're bringing in $200,000. That's almost the equivalent of what the Friends is bringing in with the money that's coming in with this grant as well. In addition to that, we're having the two phases of the Sculpture Garden. So I hope that you will support this, and we ask for your support this evening. I know you're going to vote in a few minutes, and we hope and look forward to many more years of enjoyment of our museum without walls here in the community. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, council members. My name is Patricia Jorgensen. I'm the president of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. It's been my pleasure to work very closely with the Arts Commission for several years now, and I'm happy to be here tonight to, in support of the council's acceptance of the $500,000 state grant to help with this funding. During the meeting tonight, several times, it was mentioned that it was important that we save money from our general fund, and several times in the past, it has been mentioned that we go out and look for extra support for the arts for this community. I want to commend our chairperson of the Arts Commission for doing that. She's brought extra money into the community. She's not taking money away, and I hope you take that in consideration tonight when you vote on this very important item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Carmen Smith, and I am the secretary of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation, Madam Mayor, esteemed city council. Vibrant culture, vibrant city. I want you to keep those thoughts in mind. As long as we support culture in Newport Beach, we have a beautiful harbor in Newport Beach, we have a beautiful back bay in Newport Beach, we've got a great place to live, don't we? So I am actually speaking to you, again, as these other two fine representatives have done, asking you to please accept, I'll put my glasses on, my concession to being old, accepting the $500,000 that is being offered by the state of California to help maintain and install new sculpture in the Civic Center Park. It's important that we keep in mind that it has, helps maintain as well as install, because some of that walkway that leads up to the Civic Center Park right now has already been damaged, because some of those things are very heavy, and so they need to be repaired. The money presently being budgeted by the city for Phase 5 comes in large part from Visit Newport Beach. By accepting the $500,000 from the state of California, there will be not only a Phase 5, which we're looking forward to, but a Phase 6 and a Phase 7. And in time, not all the time, there may be up to 30 pieces of sculpture in that great big 14-acre lovely park that you got out there. It can accommodate that many pieces of sculpture. In fact, Peter Walker had put out little places where he thought you could put that many pieces of sculpture. So basically, as a member of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation, I know that we have worked really hard to support this program, and we have conducted several tours. I've personally conducted several tours from brownies to older ladies to people from rest homes coming and visiting, and I've done it all. And basically, everybody enjoys it. This is a real amenity for the city of Newport Beach. I hope you do consider accepting the funds that are being offered to you and that we move ahead with Phase 5, 6, and 7. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on this item? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. When you discussed this at your last meeting, I raised the question of whether we actually knew what the plan was from Peter Walker Partners, who is the landscape firm and individual who designed the park and the landscaping for the entire city's civic center. I wanted to mention in, in the last two weeks since that meeting, Tim has actually located the recording of Mr. Walker's lecture that he gave here in, I think it was 2011, while the plan was being finalized. His comments about art in the park were extremely brief. They come in the last couple of minutes of his lecture, which can be found in the podcasts from the Newport Beach Library Foundation in their, one of their lecture series archives. And you should know that our idea of what the park should be used for has changed a bit from his vision. He saw it more as a nature park, and in his two or three minutes of comment, he actually said if it was to be designed as a Sculpture Garden, the design would be different. And so the, I, I have nothing against the current display that you're funding, but it is not, we should not attribute that to Mr. Walker. It's different than his. His idea was for a nature park with some minimal nature sculptures that would serve as accents in the park and a small number of them. Thank you.
All right, and let's bring it back. Any more public comments? Let's bring it back up here. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move that staff report be, I'm not quite sure. Yeah, staff recommendation be approved for phases 5, 6, and 7 of Sculpture Garden.
Is it 5 and 6? Is it 5?
No, I'm saying, I actually, I'm saying 5, 6, and 7. Okay, so the implication, so, so what that means is that the funds that are currently a part of the commission would remain with the commission. I believe it's $135,000 or $138,000.
All right. Is there a second? All right, there's a second. Any discussion?
All right, I'll make a substitute motion that we approve the staff recommendation A, B, C, I.
All right. So we have a substitute motion. So we vote on the first motion first. Substitute motion. All right. Any comments?
So we're voting on the substitute.
Oh, Ms. Brenner, you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, whichever way this goes, that I'm really excited that at least the next two phases of the Sculpture Garden are approved. And I think that whichever way this goes, it takes the pressure off of the Arts Commission for the time being, and I would like to ask, again, as I have so many times, that this, the efforts that could have possibly had to go into getting the next phase approved and all of that, be allocated to a much broader outreach into the community to figure out what our community really does want in the arts area and, and what they're even willing to subsidize. And, and as I've said before, are they willing to contribute money to buy certain sculptures that are especially appreciated when they're here? Or are they willing to subsidize finding representational art that they would like to see in other parts of the community? So I, I think it's a real opportunity through this funding, whichever way it goes, for us to really look at art in our community. And, and I really would like to know what kind of art our community would like to see more of and what, what they, if they would like to see art that particularly represents Newport Beach or is by Newport Beach artists or whatever. I just think this is a great opportunity to really take some pressure off and a chance to, to really get out there, much as the Harbor Commission did in their, in their work. And I was not actively involved in that, but I talked to Paul Blank about how they got out into the community, and they didn't even have a consultant or any funds to do that, but they really went out into the community and talked to them about the harbor and what they wanted to see and what changes they wanted to make and that sort of thing. So I just, it's just my, I mean, I'm only one vote, but that's my personal opinion that this is taking the pressure off, and it's a great opportunity for us to see what our community thinks about public art.
Would you want to make a friendly amendment to the motion on the table? Could you? I mean, if the author is, no?
I think that might complicate, maybe I'll do a separate amendment.
She's just suggesting what the process is.
At a, at a separate time. And sympathy, it's just an agreement here, because you have said that a number of times, and we need to make sure that it happens.
I'll bring that back and request that it be brought to council for consideration at a future meeting.
Okay. Mr. Avery, you have a comment?
Yeah, just, this is, you know, good news, basically, and it's not perfect news for, I know, for a lot of the arts commissioners and people who are fans of, of art, and I think most of us are. But, and I also think that this council has before, I, I just think it's consistently supported the arts and the Arts Commission. And we sometimes aren't all voting aligned, but basically, in my view, it's been supported all the way along. So that's my, my view of it. And sometimes we need to hold back a little bit, for whatever reason, it's just our vote. So I think the takeaway here, at least, I think should be that this council has historically and continues to support the arts. And, and I'm very proud of the commission, because there are very few commissions that have raised half a million dollars for their project, and that's pretty impressive. So, thank you.
Thank you. And so before we vote, I just want to say to, another shout out to our Arts Commission, our foundation members who are here, care passionately and have really transformed this 14 acres over the last five years into just really a showpiece and an important amenity for our community. I, I'm going to be supporting the substitute motion, because we've all been talking about their pressing needs that we have, and I believe you're covered for a couple of years. You will consistently be covered. I, I have confidence because of the Visit Newport Beach money, but we have immediate pressing needs that we're facing right now in dealing with the homeless situation and $135,000. I actually thought it was 300. Am I, am I wrong on that? It was two years of 135 each, so it's 270. 150 each? 150 each?
When she referenced 200,000, she was referencing the infrastructure improvement section, portion of it.
Okay, so what is the total amount that we're?
500.
Well, that's, that's why I'm strongly supporting a substitute motion, because I'd like that money to be returned to the general fund for dealing with other extremely pressing needs that we have as we speak, as I speak. So without further ado, let's vote on this important opportunity. Okay.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
You did it. All right. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
And, okay, I see no motion, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great, what's left of the evening. Thank you.